I'd just like to do that. Welcome to the February 18, 2016 zoning board of appeals. Before we get started, there is a lot on our agenda and a lot of people here, so I'd like to just lay in a couple ground rules. The first application is the Cituate Rod and Gun Club. I know, I think, a lot of you may be here for that. I would ask you to listen very closely to Attorney Gard's presentation on this. He may be able to answer a lot of the questions that you have coming into the meeting tonight. He's gonna spend some time and talk about the history of what brought us back here today, so if you'd just be, again, careful. And we will certainly call on the audience to ask any questions, make any comments they have after the formal presentation has passed and the board asks any questions or has any comments, and the same for Neil. When anybody wants to be heard, if you would please just raise your hand, stand up, so again, everybody can hear. And remember that we are on, we're being televised, so speak loudly, speak clearly, give your name, so Annie can get that down for the record. And try not to repeat, again, just because we have so much on for tonight, please don't, you know, at great length, repeat what someone else has said, but we will try to accommodate everybody for each and every application. Furthermore, when an application is finished and people leave the room, we would ask if you, when you leave the room, please shut the door, and if you want to have conversations about it, take it down the hall or outside, simply because, again, the noise really picks up in this room from the hallway. And then one more thing, we received tonight Valentines from students from Wampatuck School, and it was quite a nice surprise, and I'd like to read something from mine, from Kyle, for you all to remember. And this addressed personally to me. "Everything You Do Is Great."[151.69][151.69](Laughter.)
That's now on the record.
It's on the record, so keep that in mind. I don't know, everybody should show their Valentine, in case we have anybody, yes, we're gonna do that. This is great, though. I don't think, have you ever gotten Valentines from the school before?
They've been doing it for a number of years. I don't know the zoning board members.
Never.
List.
Never had.
We're moving up.
I don't know if you know this, but Annie wrote Valentines for all of you, so the kids would have them before Valentine's Day, because you guys weren't gonna get them till Tuesday.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, and then the next thing, there are a couple of continuances tonight, so we're gonna hear the motions on those first. And so if you're waiting for one of those, you won't be having to sit around and wonder if you're still, if a particular application is going to get reached. Annie, do you want to read the first one that's asked for continuance?
Continued from January 21, 2016, Jonathan Aphria of 23 Shiftyard Drive in Hingham requests a massed general law, Chapter 48, Section 6, finding a special permit on behalf of John M. Creedon to raise a single-story, non-conforming garage and construct a two-story garage with a larger footprint, keeping the same non-conforming setbacks. The property is located at Four Grasshopper Lane in Cituate. Assessors map, 7 Block 7, Parcel 2.
Okay, and did we get a letter asking for continuance?
Yes.
Okay.
To what?
For Grasshopper Lane.
Not to what date?
Oh, to the, to the March.
Moved to continue until March 17.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, so if you're here on Four Grasshopper Lane?
You get to go home.
You get, you can, if you, we're happy to have you here, but, the second application that's asked for continuance?
Kenton Albongerzone of 17 Gate Circle in Cituate requests a special permit finding, in accordance with Cituate zoning bylaws, Sections 810, 820, and MGL, Chapter 48, Section 6, to permit the extension, alteration, and/or intensification of a pre-existing, non-conforming use and structure at 5 Williamsburg Lane in Cituate. Assessors map, 37 Block 2, Parcel 4A.
And we also received a written request to continue that application.
Till March 17.
Till March 17.
Moved to continue till March 17.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Okay, so if anybody's here on Williamsburg Lane, that has been continued to March 17. Okay, moving on to our first application tonight.
Cituate Rod and Gun Club Incorporated of 965 Chief Justice Cushing Highway in Cituate requests a special permit finding pursuant to Section 810.1, 810.3, 820, Section 420, Section 3N, and/or massed general law, Chapter 48, Section 6, of the Cituate zoning bylaws to approve an existing shed and 50-yard pre-existing, non-conforming shooting range and to construct a baffle system over the entirety of said 50-yard range as approved by the Plymouth Superior Court at 965 Chief Justice Cushing Highway in Cituate. Assessors map, 12 Block 6, Parcel 1.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening. Attorney Steve Gard for the applicant. With me is this year's president, Phil Lennon. As you heard in the public notice, it does a very accurate job of describing what the applicant is here to do today. The Cituate Rod and Gun Club was established in 1929 and presently located at its present location in 1948. The club, from a historical standpoint, was a pre-existing, non-conforming use until 1956, when it was an allowed use as a nonprofit civic organization, and then became a pre-existing, non-conforming use in 1977, when it was changed to allowing for a club-a-lodge. The application that we filed today considers the jurisdiction of this board under 48, Section 6, as a pre-existing, non-conforming use, as well as the special permit use in a residential district. What brings us here today is essentially the culmination of litigation. As everyone knows, the club was subject to an injunction whereby handguns and rifles were no longer allowed to be discharged on the premises. That litigation culminated in a judgment against the gun club, which then was satisfied, and then a motion to vacate the injunction was put forth by the gun club.
Could you just, and maybe you're gonna get to it, but could you just give a little history of what happened in the Superior Court that led to the judgment?
So, the judgment, so procedurally speaking, the case was fully vetted throughout litigation, and a full trial on the merits was taking place. And the judge found in favor of the plaintiffs in that case and awarded damages for trespass. The allowing and maintaining that the injunction was to remain in place until such time as the club came back to the court with an adequate or acceptable plan to reopen the range. So, that plan is what you have before you tonight in your packets, as well as I have a larger version for the easel in a moment, I'll get up and put it up for us. How we got to the plan is really probably the most important question, because it wasn't just a plan that the gun club has put together and, you know, asking you guys to bless. It was a plan that was submitted via a motion to vacate the injunction. It was fully vetted and litigated between the plaintiffs in that case and the attorneys for the Cituate Rod and Gun Club. There were experts competing on both sides, and Judge Helly came to the conclusion issuing the order, which is to allow the range to reopen, provided that this particular range design is constructed. In your packets, I've included excerpts from the judge's order, which also talks about the operating procedures that the club will be required to adhere to in the future and to open. It should be noted that the club cannot simply build this baffle system and then turn the key and start operating. Once the baffle system is constructed, or assuming it's allowed by you folks this evening, the baffle system has to be constructed, along with other safety measures, such as an electronic key card system, fencing, and then there has to be training involved for all of the members, which I will get to you, get to in a minute. I know that you're busy tonight, so I will try to be as brief as possible.
This is important, so, you know, take whatever time you need to, so it's, everybody really has an understanding of what's gonna go forward.
I appreciate that, and it's important to the Rod and Gun Club that everybody understands that this is an application that is approved by the court, you know, and it is the application that is what the people of this club believe would be a squared-away range, safe for all involved. So, backing up a minute, in order to get the range open again, we would have to have, like I said, the key card system, the fencing system, cameras in place, the protocol for training, the protocol for use of the range, all as approved by the judge, built, constructed, and then an as-built plan, much like we do with a foundation plan for our construction, has to be submitted to the court, before the court will even allow us to open in any case whatsoever.
Now, will the court, whatever decision we come down with, will the court review our decision to make sure that it's in compliance with what the court has ordered?
So, the court, well, so the court has ordered that we comply, that the Rod and Gun Club comply with all municipal regulations required, hence the zoning board of appeals, building permits, et cetera, et cetera. I suspect that in the package, I don't represent the club in the litigation, I suspect that in the litigation package that would be submitted for a motion to vacate the injunction, having built the range, your decision would be included. So, there is no, certainly the club is not in a position to ask you for anything that is not in the order. That's not what we're here for, we are simply asking for your approval for us to build the range, consistent with exactly what the judge has required us to do, not allowed, but requires us to do. So, yes, to answer your question, it will be in that package, Judge Helly will absolutely look at the decision, I can assure you, he will read the decision, so. That having been said, I think, I'll put up the larger version of the range design for the benefit of the folks that are here tonight. I know that the smaller version is in your package, it is a little bit easier to see the range design on the big one, here.
That may need to be turned or pushed back.
Yeah, let me move back for Neil. Neil, do you want me to move this back? Are you okay? Put it up there?
Well, usually we put it over there, about a block in.
I can do that.
Whatever's best for the audience.
No, that's fine. Want me to put it over here?
Sure.
Is everybody able to hear everything?
Yes.
Okay. If you don't, just do that.
So, as you can see from the locus map, the gun club is located at 965.
Can I come up here? Thank you.
So, as you can see, it's at 965 Chief Justice Cushing Highway, that's kind of just before you get to the coacid, Cituate coacid line. The baffle system that is required to be constructed is the entire length of the 50-yard range. What you see here are the topographical lines, or the grade lines, for the burms that have to be constructed around the range entirely. Essentially, it's like depressing the range in order to build the range. So, at the end of the range here, the soft section is approximately 22 feet above grade of the shooting grade for the bottom of the floor of the range itself. On the sides, it runs about, I think it's around 16 or 17 feet along the sides. And then at this end of the range, right here, which is not depicted in this range plan, because it wasn't part of the lawsuit, but it's the structure, the pavilion structure that you'll see in your package that we've provided.
Is this the baffle?
Yes, exactly. So, that shooting, that shed, basically it's a roof with some holes that hold a roof in a small closet in the back. That was constructed in 2003 without a permit. It was, the club was unaware that they needed a permit, they thought it was just a shed like you get from Home Depot, and they just put it up. So, however, that was subject to a cease and desist from Neil as a result of it being a non, requiring a building permit and one having not obtained one, the club having not obtained one. They would've come in sooner for the building permit for that structure, but because of the range injunction, we didn't want to make matters, we didn't want to confuse things at that point to come for that. So, we're here today to do both, because the shooting position or the pavilion at the end of the range is also gonna provide for a covered shooting position, which you'll see when I get to the order, the certain things in the order, it talks about covered shooting position. It'll also help mitigate noise and create a more organized shooting firing line as well, because it is an enclosed structure, at least on the roof side, and it's going to nestle in the end of the two, these two ends of the burms as well. So, that's a basic design. It's very similar to something you would see in your backyard for a trellis or an arbor, something like that, much more substantial. They have two-by-ten, the crossmembers are two-by-ten construction, and they are set nine inches on center for the entire 50 yards of the range. So, and this is a simple pass section of what you can see on the side, you can see that anywhere on the range, you'd be able to shoot without being able to, you'd not be able to, the projectile would not be able to leave the range and leave the berm as well. That's the point of the nine inches on center. Again, this was all litigated with the court system, but I think it's important that, you know, that you folks understand that the lengths and the measures that have, the club and the court have gone through to approve a design that would be safe for the neighbors and for everybody involved, anybody that's even at the club walking around. So, again, as you can see, it's an extensive, you know, baffle system to protect the entire length of the range. Most clubs that have a shooting range like this, they have the burms, but generally, there's a shooting position, and then there's only about maybe 20 yards of the baffle system, because they, you know, if you pick the firearm up, it won't leave the range, there's a calculation that's done. In this case, it's all the way across. These are other sort of technical drawings that lawyers don't do in my club, so, but you can see here that this is just sort of a blow-up of the baffle system itself, for the entire length of it. We do have the contractor that we've asked to build it for us, Bob Askalucci here, so he is familiar with the plans and has filed the application for the building permit, sure that he could, you know, expand on any kind of specific technical questions if you would have. Of course, the point of this is also so that, although this is not a structure, as I put in my materials under the zoning code or the building code, it's, I think that having it subject to the inspections department inspection, it makes sense for everybody involved. It's a substantial structure, we don't want it to fall over, we want it to be built properly, and certainly, we're willing to have the Cituate Inspection Department, you know, give their blessing as well. So, the, so that's just the foundation. So, as you can see, you see all those black dots, those are, these would be the pilings that the baffle system was placed upon, so. And then again, it's another sort of framing plan for. So, this is, I did this because I thought, this is all in your package as well, I thought it would be beneficial to those that attended the meeting, as well as yourself, to sort of highlight the things in the judge's order that I thought the zoning board would be most interested in. This is for the 50-yard range, as adopted by Judge Charlie Helly. No shooting on the 50-yard range before 9:00 AM or when the parking lights come on. That's, there's a light-sensitive parking light, when that light comes on, shooting must cease on this range, as required by the court order. Access to the range will be by a 50, a separate electronic key card system, which will allow the club, to jump down here a couple, will allow the club to manage the person, the members that are allowed to use the range, so that they will have to have a three-hour range safety course before they can get their key card to go on the range. So, all persons using the range will sign in and out of the law club. Surveillance cameras are installed, and I didn't put this in the excerpts, but in the court order, it requires us to designate a person to review those tapes periodically. The property shall remain gated and access limited to members at all times. At the front, at the end of our driveway, right before you get into the parking lot, there's a very large metal gate, which is locked. Each member has a key, and only members are allowed, it's chained off on both sides, you cannot get a car access in. Anybody that would be going across the, at that point, would be trespassing. So, all current, future members shall take two, three-hour range safety course, certified range safety officer. Range shall be limited to pistol ammunition. So, this is one of the things that the judge did in that, so, we're not, the club is not gonna be allowed to shoot rifles, long-range rifles, or the big caliber rifles, excuse me, because it's not, I'm not affiliated with that, but it's a pistol range, pistol and handgun range. Now, that having been said, the court has authorized the use of rifles, provided that they only shoot pistol or handgun ammunition. So, like a 22 rifle can shoot a 22 in a handgun, and it can shoot a 22 out of a rifle. That is allowed to be used on this range. The one thing about, I didn't put it up here, but the, if a rifle is to be used on the range, it has to be with two people, so that there's verification by a second person that that person is shooting from the rifle, the pistol ammunition authorized by the court order. Handguns, that doesn't apply, because you can't shoot anything but handgun ammunition, handgun. So, range shall be limited to pistol ammunition, rimfire, which is this thing we talked about, and muzzleloader firearms, which is the primitive firearms, black powder, and then airguns and shotguns. Shotguns are already, shotgun shooting on the premises was not the subject of the injunction, and it was very clear in the court's order that that was not part of this issue for this case. The low fire is permitted, obviously, out of the fire line and out of the elevation of backstops, obviously, that goes without saying, but to the order. All events shall be supervised by a certified range safety officer. So, club members have to be there, and they're responsible themselves. There is, members are only allowed to have one guest at a time. Most clubs allow you to bring two guests to a firing range, but the judge limited us to one, which is fine, okay with that. As far as events go, sometimes there are shooting events there in the past, but they have to be supervised by a certified range safety officer, which was not required before. Minors must be accompanied by an adult using the range, we already have that in place as far as our club rules go. So, that having been said, the club is at a point in this process that we are, you know, trying desperately to raise the money to construct the range, it is a costly proposition, but a worthy proposition. And the club itself, it really does fill a need in our community right now. We do hold a firearm safety class, and we have seen an uptick in the attendance to these classes. We think that there is an overwhelming need for, a desire for the community to have a better awareness of firearm safety, and that class plus this range will give them a firsthand look of what, you know, it is like to have a safe range and safe handling of firearms. So, the, again, the one thing I will add about the pavilion that was constructed in 2003, oftentimes when a structure is built without a permit, and it's discovered or discussed, this permit, this structure did not fall under the 10-year rule, it was a few years short of the 10-year rule. And so, what would happen is, is what I would anticipate, should you allow the use of the pavilion in connection with the 50-yard range, we would pull a building permit with Neil's office, and then the structure would be subject to all of the required building permit inspections before it could be utilized or occupied. That way, the community could be assured that it meets the current building code, and we want it to as well, so. I would gladly address any questions that you might have, and certainly look forward to hearing from you.
Well, I was, I was, thank you, I was really covered a lot. I read the Judge Healy's decision in detail, and I was amazed at the amount of detail that he went into. I mean, he doesn't just talk about the pistol ammunition, he specifically excludes appropriate use of some very, you know, of various caliber ammunition, so it's, I don't think it's gonna be an order that anybody at the range is gonna find difficult to understand and follow, so, that was good.
It certainly made my job a lot easier crafting the application for the zoning. I mean, he laid it out for me, I didn't have to do much of that, and I will give Neil credit for laying out the zoning history on the property as well, from his letter back in 2008. He did a very good job of analyzing the history of the club and how it was, how it affected the zoning, how it was affected by the zoning changes over the years. That was very helpful to me to understand where the club is now and where we can go, where it can go in the future.
And again, as I understand, you said that the plaintiffs, which were the neighbors, some of the neighbors, correct?
Yeah, essentially, it was the folks, there was a group of folks who lived on Heritage Trail.
Okay. And so, they had input to the court before this was written about what they thought was important to have included?
Yes, they did, yeah. They were represented by their attorneys, they had their own experts, and then, you know, they had a hearing, a full public, the public, but a full hearing before Judge Helly, and that was the result of the decision, as well as, there's an amended decision in there as well, but I added those, a couple of things that he added after, as an afterthought when he wanted to include in the operating procedures.
Okay. Frank, do you have any questions?
No appeal, right?
I'm sorry?
No appeal of Judge Healy's.
No appeal. No, we did not, no, we did not appeal.
Nobody appealed.
Nor did they.
Nor did they, nor did they.
Okay.
That's it?
No, you seem to outline the safety issue, which was a big concern when you were here a number of years ago, still in the same detail as, as far as, you know, everyone's best interest, the extension of the travel, if you will, overhead and eliminate the accidents for, anyway, for things to travel further or in places they shouldn't.
Yeah. I think the significant difference, Mr. Holland, as you point out, is that, you know, when the club was before you before, there wasn't with the full faith and backing in the vetting of this process through the Superior Court. So, I can appreciate the lengths that everyone has gone to to arrive at this point, and I probably would agree, it probably wasn't right for that. For you to make a decision back then would've been not an easy one. Now, I'm not saying that this is an easy one by any stretch of the imagination, but it is certainly supported by a Superior Court judge.
Okay, Neil, do you have any questions, comments?
Just, you know, I know I've read this, but the application is for a special permit to make, to allow the use of the 50-yard range and existing shed, and making that finding need to show that it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. And I think, you know, personally, the judge has pretty much laid out everything that then some, that the board would find in the normal circumstances. I'd also like to point out, and correct me if I'm wrong, anybody, to the best of my knowledge, I'm not a hunter, or I, you know, was in the service, and I did fire weapons that fired 7.62-millimeter rounds, so I'm very familiar with them. That would be typically what you'd use in an older assault rifle, so it sounds to me like they're pretty much banned. And that, hunting is allowed in the West End, so somebody actually could go out in the woods on their property, with permission from a property owner, and fire an assault rifle outside of the confines of a gun club, you know, I just want to make that point.
They can? They can shoot an assault rifle in the West End?
I don't know of any restrictions against it, I certainly know they can hunt, so.
Assault rifle's a loaded term, not to be, no pun intended, but.
Well, it's like an AK-47.
Certainly, center fire, center fire ammunition is allowed.
The rapid fire, it fires, you know, a round meant to kill.
Things.
Okay. Would you like to say anything?
No, I'm, thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you for asking.
At this point, well, yeah, we'll open it up to the public. The, all right, he's seceding to the lady.
Should I sit down?
Yeah, I think you should stand, you have, sound like you have a soft voice, so just speak loudly and say your name.
Put my papers down?
Ask him, it's his table.
My name is Mindy Connolly, and I'm here with my husband, Chris Connolly, and my neighbors, the Nortons, and we live on Heritage Trail. I would like to start out by basically letting you all know that we've been living with this since 2004. My house was struck by two bullets, so 12 years ago, in 2004, we reported to the police that we had found a bullet, and in 2005, when I was six months pregnant, a bullet had hit my garage door, and we reported that to the police, and in 2008, a bullet struck Ms. Norton's house, and as a result of selectmen hearings, as well as some failed negotiation attempts, we wound up filing a lawsuit with the Superior Court in January of 2009, so.
Is this this lawsuit that we're talking about?
I am a plaintiff in that lawsuit, and as a result, I have been living with this and have knowledge of the circumstances and the events surrounding not only the litigation, but selectmen hearings, as well as appearances before the zoning board, and investigations that we had requested of Mr. Duggan for 12 years. With that being said, I would like to impress upon the board how incredibly important this one process is. Contrary to what has been discussed, there was not a full vetting before Judge Healy of the matter that is currently before. of the matter that is currently before you. As a matter of fact, the gun club had filed a motion in liminae, which was granted by Judge Healy, to not discuss, review, or deal with any zoning issues, including the shutdown of the 50-yard range. So, at the start of the hearing, excuse me, at the start of the trial, before we were to select a jury, which eventually we wound up having a trial by judge, we had opposed the motion, but the judge had ruled from the bench that he would not be deciding any zoning issues whatsoever. And as a result of the latest motion to vacate, which the defendant had filed, the judge was very particular in also exempting out any discussion or rendering of a decision regarding zoning issues. And I have for your consideration the full decision by Judge Healy, in which he discusses some of the range operating procedures, what is exempted, as well as what he is not deciding, and to the extent that zoning is more restrictive than the injunction standards that are applied by a Superior Court judge, that issue has not been debated or vetted, and there's no estoppel there in terms of what Judge Healy has ruled upon. I would also like to add that we have not been notified of the application by the gun club, and for purposes of this hearing, we're trying our best, learning information for a first time tonight, to help address and inform the board before any decision is made. But to the extent that you will accept some paperwork that I have brought with me tonight, I would like to proceed, as I am talking, to give you extra paperwork for your consideration so that you can have an informed decision from our perspective, as well as what happened before Judge Healy, before making any decisions on tonight's application.
Happy to have anything you have there.
Thank you, I appreciate it. So, the first thing that I would like to point out is that we had requested Mr. Duggan to make an inspection and a determination of the 50-yard range, and this was back in 2009, after the 2008 incident involving the Norton house. And as a result, we wound up getting a cease and desist letter, which was sent to the gun club by certified mail, where it was determined by Mr. Duggan that the 50-yard firing range was to cease and desist as a result of not only being constructed without the necessary permits, but also being outside of any grandfathered status. At the time that Mr. Duggan had made this assessment, there was photographic evidence that had shown that the 50-yard range, which included the removal of trees, construction of berms, backstop, basically the addition of 50-yard range adjacent to the 100-yard range, was done in the 1990s. And this was clearly outside of any pre-existing non-conforming use that would be exempt under grandfathered status, and as a result, use of the 50-yard range itself was shut down. Per the letter, the gun club was entitled to make an appeal within 30 days, and they failed to do so. They did not challenge any indication or facts or cease and desist statements by Mr. Duggan that they could not use the 50-yard range, and at that time, we had not even filed a lawsuit. So, any consideration of an appeal by the gun club would not have been contingent upon plaintiffs, or a lawsuit, or an injunction, because they didn't exist at the time. The gun club just failed to appeal. So, based upon that, I find that their special permit application contains a materially defective statement, in that they are claiming that they're seeking approval under Chapter 40A for an existing shed and a quote "50-yard pre-existing non-conforming shooting range." It's not a pre-existing non-conforming shooting range. It's been determined to be an unlawful and illegal range, of which the gun club failed to make its appeal seven years ago. So, based upon that, they're applying for a special permit for an unlawful and unprotected use and range, and that appears to be a defective part of their application. So, aside from not having the paperwork and knowing that the gun club was seeking this application, when I was looking at their actual application under the special permit, it did not seem to be the proper procedure, but what they are essentially doing is appealing Mr. Duggan's decision to shut down the 50-yard range, as if this were an appeal, but they're untimely by seven years. So, I just wanted to draw that to the, the board's attention, that the presentation tonight really just glosses over the issues which should have been dealt with seven years ago. And as a result, the 50-yard range is not protected, it is not pre-existing non-conforming use, and it really should not be allowed to operate contingent upon this plan, it just should not be allowed to operate because they failed to exert their rights to appeal under the cease and desist, and bring this to the attention of the zoning board, which appealed seven years ago. That being said, I would also like to bring to your attention that the 50-yard range has been found to be detrimental to Heritage Trail. We litigated this case, and over a three-year course of litigation, we ultimately wound up with a finding of fact and ruling by Judge Healy that the four bullets that hit Heritage Trail originated from the gun club. Two of those bullets originated from the 50-yard. It was part of deposition testimony, it was part of my testimony, it was part of what the judge had found. One of the bullets that hit the Norton's house came off of a bowling pin during a bowling pin match that the gun club officers set took place at the 50-yard range. And the second bullet that, that hit my house was a 9-millimeter, which was shot from a pistol, also from the 50-yard range, which was known as the pistol range. So, that being said, we're already before the board, having established through Judge Healy's findings, which I will present to you, that the 50-yard range is a detriment, as it existed, as it exists. It's a, it's a detriment to our neighborhood, and not only to our neighborhood, but the injunction was also issued based on it being a detriment to surrounding neighborhoods. We produced evidence that showed within the NRA Range Sourcebook that bullets fired from pistols have a range of one mile, bullets fired from rifles have a range of three miles. And what I would ask the board to seriously consider is what the gun club is not telling you. What they are not telling you is something as simple as a surface danger zone. Their expert, Clark Vargas, who drafted the plans, and on behalf of the gun club, and who also is the author of the NRA Range Sourcebook, is a published author. And I have for you two articles by their expert, where he has publicly stated that nothing takes the place of a surface danger zone or an SDZ analysis. Whenever you are doing site construction, site evaluation for a gun range, you have to know what you're firing at and who's in your way. And a surface danger zone is basically a cone of fire. It's an extension, a mathematical calculation of when bullets of different calibers are fired from different guns, how far do they travel? And we produced, as part of our complaint, a surface danger zone, which was done by an expert, which put Heritage Trail right in the middle. And I also have for you a satellite map, which shows that the orientation of the ranges are directly into our neighborhood. If there's 360 degrees, they're at the exact degree faced into our neighborhood. Their expert, Clark Vargas, has published a treaty, which I have here for you, where he states that when you are building downrange of a populated area, and you are a quarter of a mile to a half mile away from a populated area, you must be totally baffled, and you must have angled baffles. He also discusses concrete baffles. I have not seen their latest plans, but these were the plans that were submitted to the court. We have our own expert, who is a ballistics expert. Clark Vargas is not a ballistics expert. He is, he has not been approved by the court to talk about ballistics, and our expert was. But, you know, Clark Vargas has basically submitted plans which are baffling, consisting of one and a half inch pine. And one and a half inch pine, according to our expert, is not going to stop a bullet. We are absolutely in fear that the construction and the allowance of a 50-yard range will be detrimental to Heritage Trail, precisely for the fact that there were four bullet strikes in our neighborhood from 2004 to 2008, and since the injunction issued, there have been zero bullet strikes in seven years. So, it's incumbent upon the defendant, upon the gun club, if they are allowed to proceed with a special permit application, despite the fact that they have a 50-yard that has been shut down and is unlawful. It is incumbent upon them to demonstrate to the board that their SDZ will not include Heritage Trail, that they will not trespass, because their bullets must be contained on their property, and that is by their own expert's admission, as well as the NRA Range Sourcebook, are not allowed to trespass with gunfire, and that the, the gun club will produce for this court, or for this board, evidence that a ballistics expert will certify that their bullets will be contained to their footprint. Right now, what you have are plans, and none of this exempts the gun club from following zoning restrictions, which include not being detrimental to surrounding neighbors. So, I would just ask that you consider the paperwork that I submit to you, which includes the complaint, the judge's findings of fact and ruling on the motion to vacate, our expert's analysis of their plan when they submitted it to the court, as well as satellite imagery that shows the orientation of the range, and that if you are going to consider that the gun club operate a 50-yard range, that you consider it as if it had never happened before. Basically, what they are looking for is to introduce a new nonconformity, and I would submit to you that that's not allowed, that they had an existing footprint as of 1960, which Mr. Duggan had spoken, or written at length about in his February 2009 decision. And backtracking a little, we had asked Mr. Duggan to shut down the 100-yard, on the grounds that they should not be allowed to operate that range. And while he had shut down the 50-yard range, he allowed the 100-yard range to continue operating, on the premise that they were grandfathered as of March 1960. So, I would submit to the board that if you go by that decision, then the gun club must stay within its grandfathered footprint of where it looked, or what it looked like in March of 1960. And that does not include the expansion and construction of a 50-yard range, which was subsequently shut down because it should have never been allowed in the first place.
Very good. I have a couple of questions for you, and I, and then we'll get to, to Neil, I want to talk to you about the, the first argument about it's not, it's not a pre-existing nonconformity. Your, your, your statements with respect to your expert and their expert, all of that was presented to Judge Healy during the trial?
It was.
Okay.
It was presented to Judge Healy at the trial, but Judge Healy is going by the standard that there should be, that the gun club should not unreasonably risk the residents surrounding it. And that's a different standard than what the zoning board is examining, which is whether the gun club's expansion, intensification of use, non-conforming gun range is a detriment to the neighborhood. And based upon what we're submitting to you, under zoning, the NRA Range Sourcebook, their own expert, articles which describe how to site and plan for an outdoor gun range, you must consider that the gun range has a 100% containment application to its bullets. They cannot be a detriment to the surrounding neighborhood. And the one way to demonstrate that is to demonstrate that their bullets will not escape their property. And right now, they have no expert, who is a ballistics expert, they have no SDZ, which could be done by a ballistics expert, to show if a bullet hits one and a half inch pine back then, that they have in their plan, what happens to a bullet that's fired, and it's a 9-millimeter? What, what happens to a bullet and it's fired from a rifle? Whether or not it's shooting pistol ammunition, what happens to that bullet? Because the gun club's property is the footprint for that bullet, for those bullets in that SDZ. They're not allowed to go beyond their property lines, and that's well-established within the NRA Range Sourcebook, as well as their own expert. And there are no assurances, there's no certification, as far as I heard tonight, from a ballistics engineering expert regarding an SDZ, that their plans, as designed currently, will 100% contain their bullets. Even their own expert discusses baffling, as if you're going to stop around, you must stop it completely. And the designs that he discusses are concrete, or steel, with some kind of material filled in between. And these are items that are not subject to doubt, they're written in standard practice, particularly when the gun club is directly pointing into a neighborhood. If this were a blank slate, and a gun club wanted to be located at that precise area, it would not, it would be absolutely incredible to believe that they would be allowed to point downrange into a neighborhood, precisely because there's zero room for error, as we've seen with the four bullet strikes in our neighborhood. And we don't want to be on the receiving end of a mistake. And as much as they say that they're trying desperately to fundraise, they've been operating for seven years under an injunction. They've been having ski matches. They're still functioning. It's not asking for a lot more to be extra cautious and understand that these bullets are not going to impact a neighborhood filled with kids and families, people who have already lived through not only bullet strikes, but several years of litigation. We are asking that the zoning board consider that more information is necessary, and if so decides, that the 50-yard itself was deemed unlawful and should not be subject to reopening. They had, they had the opportunity to argue this, and they should have argued it by February of 2009. And I find it incredible that we're here seven years later, basically dealing with an appeal on a range that has been essentially shut down and uncontested since 2009. And whatever Judge Healy has decided, he specifically did not decide zoning, and it was a conditional order. He did not lift the injunction. There are multiple conditions, because the gun club did not provide information that we desperately asked for. In particular, we wanted to know, if you look at the NRA Range Sourcebook, there are various tabs here, and the tabs have everything from different schematics that apply when you have muzzleloading, when you have an outdoor action pistol range, when you have a rifle range, when you do silhouette shooting, when you do archery. There are different protections that are in place depending on what you propose to do. And what the gun club is also not stating tonight, is what they're proposing to do is expand the use of the 50-yard range. At the time that we won both the preliminary and the permanent injunction, the 50-yard range was a static range, meaning they stood under a shooting shed, and they were technically not supposed to advance beyond the firing line. What we had established at trial was that there were different calibers from different types of guns, rifles and pistols, that went up and down, shells that went up and down the range. The static range itself is supposed to be a dangerous range to the surrounding community because shooters must stand in one, one line. What the gun club is proposing to do is make this 50-yard range a dynamic range, and the dynamic range means they can have action shooting, which means they can fire from any point, from the firing line that originally existed, all the way to the backstop. And this is a significant change in use, from where the gun club had traditionally said the 50-yard pistol range was supposed to be, to what they're proposing. And concurrent with that, we still don't know what kind of activities they want to have on there. Are they going to have action shooting for, for competitions? We don't know. But this book states, if you're going to have outdoor action pistol shooting, you need to have safeguards that are 180 degrees. So, it's not just in your line of sight, looking downrange, it's left to right, 180 degrees, because you have people who are running up and down the length of that range, potentially shooting from. shooting from multiple points. The other issue that I take with, take exception to is from the plans that they had submitted before, the baffles were not angled. And according to the NRA range source book, when you have an action pistol range, you need to have no blue sky. No blue sky means when you're standing anywhere under the trellis, you know, whether it's concrete, wooden build with, you know, some kind of hard material, or just pine, which in itself is insufficient, you should not be able to see blue sky. If you see blue sky, then that's a potential for a bullet to escape. And their expert, Clark Vargas, has said that when you have a dynamic shooting range, you need to have angled baffles. When you are one and a half mile away from a neighborhood downrange, it needs to be 45 degrees angled baffling. If you are one quarter of a mile, it needs to be 90 degrees. And their plan does not account for that. If you look at Judge Healy's ruling in the motion to vacate, it's very conditional. There's a lot of moving parts. And the gun club holds a lot of answers to those moving parts. And one of my frustrations has been, how do we solve the problem of whether we're safe when we don't have definitive answers? So let's start with the most basic answers. Where is the SDZ? Will an expert, will a ballistics expert come out and certify that the SDZ is contained to their footprint? I have my expert here who says it won't work. It doesn't work, it won't work. One and a half inch pine will not stop various calibers of bullets. But most impressive of, most impressing that I would like to make to you is, please don't let them essentially operate an illegal range. It never should have happened. This was a fair determination in 2009. We left it alone because we agreed with Mr. Duggan's decision. We felt the issue was over and done with. And they should not be allowed to introduce a new nonconformity that is clearly outside of where they existed as of 1960, which has been proven in a court of law to be a detriment to our neighborhood in particular.
Thank you. Mr. Duggan, would you like to--
Sure. I just--
Address the pre-existing nonconformity.
I think that was a well-articulated argument--
Was.
Very well articulated. And I am not speaking in support of or against, I just like to get the facts out. I think procedurally, when I issue a cease and desist order on a pre-existing nonconforming use, say a car dealership where they've been selling 20 cars in a residential district for the past, you know, 50 years, now all of a sudden they're selling 30 cars, the, that very likely could wind up being a cease and desist, a permanent cease and desist, because the, it's not a use that's otherwise allowed in that residential neighborhood. So I think when you look at the law, the law basically says that under Chapter 48, Section 6, pre-existing nonconforming use, you can expand it, but it has to be, you know, permitted under the bylaw. And in this case, the club lodge, I think this, this is where it is permitted with a special permit. So I think what, you know, the gun club has done here is they've applied for a finding under Chapter 48, Section 6, and also a special permit, you know, if that's what's necessary. But I think because the bylaw allows it, I think what will, and this is what I, my first statement was that, you know, I just want to remind everybody that we're here, you know, for this, this finding, you know, you need to subject it to the powers test, which is a three-prong test, which ultimately will, and I think you have to look at, is it permitted under the bylaw? Is the expansion then substantially more detrimental? There's a couple of other things that go along with that. So I think procedurally, my cease and desist, there is a cure for it, there's no time limitation on the cure, and the cure has to come in front of the zoning board, which I have advised the gun club for the last five years or so. They, you know, certain members have come in, I said, you need to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals, you need to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals. So here they are. That's it.
The difficulty, and you obviously have spent a great deal of time studying all of this. Yep, pass it to Annie and she'll take care of it. The difficulty is that we are faced with a judge, a judge's orders that came as the result of, I'm sure, days' worth of testimony?
Days on Sunday.
Well, how many?
A few years.
Well, no, but I mean, the actual testimony of the experts. The experts were there, you know, questions were asked, your attorney were allowed to ask questions of the experts, their attorney asked questions of their experts. We cannot reinvent, you know, that testimony. And I, I mean, I don't feel like I can. I know it's, you know, it's, in some ways, you were given the order, okay? The judge made the order, and if you felt strongly that it was insufficient, your option at that time would have been to appeal that order.
Can I ask a question first--
Sure.
--before we get to the audience? Because I'm not sure I necessarily see it that way. The, the, the judge is, judge is making a ruling based on, I'm not sure whether it was a nuisance or what, but a threat to, a threat to the neighborhood at the time. And, and as a result of the findings that, that he made, determined apparently there was a substantial threat and some sort of remedy needed to be taken.
Very well.
I was a little disappointed, frankly, that, that I didn't see in the submission the entirety of Judge Healy's decision. I think that would have been helpful.
Oh, my apologies. It's lengthy. I just took out the stuff about--
And I'm not casting aspersions. I was going to say that I suspect it was because we get enough paper and--
Well, it was--
But the issue has been raised--
It was more than that, Mr. Lynch. It was, it was a conscious decision not to include it because frankly, I thought that those issues were fully vetted during the litigation, and I didn't expect the Zoning Board of Appeals to have to retry the case here tonight.
So that's my point, I guess, and that's my question, is, so Judge Healy is in, in a forum dealing with that particular claim and addressing the remedy of that particular situation. I'm not surprised to hear, and I'm sure I will read, knowing Judge Healy, that, that he carved out very clearly what it was he was ruling and what he was not ruling on. And it seems to me that, my question, I guess to you, is that if we're supposed to make a determination here as to whether this proposal is, is more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood than was pre-existing, aren't, don't we also need to make some sort of judgment as to whether there is going to be a threat to the neighborhood going forward? And it's a, it's a, it's a different decision we make. So are we bound by what Judge Healy ruled, or do we make our own determination? And, and, you know, with due respect to him, we may disagree with what he found. Is it, is that open to us, I guess is my question?
I think, just to follow up on what you said, Frank, is his decision the minimal or the starting point? And, or do we, is that where we start from?
You know, yeah, I picked up on that comment too. I mean, so Judge Healy said that the zoning requirements of the town may be more restrictive. Now, we don't have any standards on what a gun range should, should or shouldn't do. So I'm not sure I see it that way. But I, I think it may be more restrictive in that the zoning board may make its own judgment and may come to different conclusions of fact and different opinions as to what is safe and what is unsafe. I suspect Judge Healy went through this quite thoroughly, it looks like he did to me. And, and I believe that he, his intention probably was to make sure that this was as safe as possible and, and that nobody would be at risk. And, and I respect him a lot, and I give him a lot of deference as, as a result of that. He's an excellent judge. But again, my question is, is, are we bound by that decision, or do we need to make our own independent judgment on these issues?
And just to add, I think, I'm not sure we're bound by that decision, but at the same time, a judge and a court with a lot more time and a lot more power to get to the heart of that issue as to the level of risk, and we could argue over risk detriment, I think, but that might end up in more semantics. But what I'm more concerned with, and I'm not sure we're bound by, we're bound to come to the same determination, whether or not we're foolish to come to a different determination is another question. But I think what we are bound by is to determine whether there's a detriment to the change. So I don't think when a use is pre-existing nonconforming, and there's a change or intensification of that use, we go back to the beginning and term, and determine if the pre-existing use is a detriment. We determine if the intensification of that use is a substantial detriment. And so I think my first question is to--
Can I just interject one thing?
Yeah.
The, as part of, the neighbors initially asked me to look into the 50-yard range, which I did. Their attorney sometime later, not too much later, questioned the nonconforming status of the entire range, the entire club. So that's when I did all my research, and I, I found, I denied his request for, their request for enforcement. That was appealed to the board, and the board upheld it. That decision was not appealed, so I don't think that's on the table.
Well, and that's to my point, in that I don't think it's for us to answer whether or not a range period in this location is a detriment, because I think that's already been decided, and I don't think that's before us. And then it becomes, and so I guess my question then, maybe for you or the audience, or for the applicant here, is what exactly is the change from the range that was issued in that instance?
It's an intensification of the use.
Right. And so I think the question then is, the detriment question is, is that intensification, with the modifications and the baffling that has been reviewed by the court, is that intensification a detriment?
Are we comparing, I hear what you're saying, are we comparing the range to the range that existed before, controlled, or are we comparing it to a shut-down?
No. Is, is the intensification of the range with the baffling that's been approved by the court--
Yeah.
--substantially more detrimental--
Than--
--than the range that was allowed and was reviewed in the last go-around with the zoning board? I don't think we get to go back to the, if, if, if this was a home that was pre-existing nonconforming, and they want to intensify that home or enlarge that home, we review whether that intensification is substantially more detrimental. We don't go back to the beginning as to whether or not the home should have been there in the first place.
Correct. I agree with that.
So, and so I think that's what we need to review. And to go back to your first question, in my humble opinion, I'm not sure we're bound to come to the same determination of the judge. I'm not sure I see any reason to not come to the same determination. I don't know if we're bound to, but I think that's the issue here, is, is the intensification of the range with the baffling substantially more detrimental? Obviously, there's a couple of questions we need to answer before that, but they're perhaps not as complex of a review.
Just as the devil's advocate here, the range as it pre-existed before was shut down as being unsafe.
That was a shutdown for non-zoning issues, which were fully litigated.
Right. I understand that. So--
So that dumps us right back to our review questions. Is the intensification as proposed, which is, has approved by the judge's order, substantially more detrimental for the neighborhood than the range that was previously allowed?
Then, under that, anything that would be improvement then would make, would meet the test.
That's certainly one way to look at it.
If I could just speak today, sorry--
Well, the gentleman behind you. We have to let as many people--
My name's Alan Norton. It's 17 Heritage Trail, and we're one of the plaintiffs. We had a bullet come through a window in our house, in our one room. I'll be quick. The big picture here is, and there's a lot of good discussion, is the judge is telling you what he can live with, but he's throwing this back on the town. When this originally came up, the selectmen told us, we have no jurisdiction. We, we went to the town first and said, why don't you figure it out, hire an expert, and we can live with what you decide. And the town said, no, it's up, you guys have to take care of it, go to court. And we did, and we won. We proved the bullets came from the gun club, we proved the gun club was safe. The injunction has not been lifted, and that should be telling. And the judge will not lift it unless the town takes responsibility for it. And so that's, I'm not telling you what to do, but the judge will not lift the injunction unless you give them a permit. If they don't have a permit, it's clear in the orders, the judge will not order anyone to open up this gun club. And this is a very complex issue. So you have the intensification issue. We don't know what they're going to be shooting. They'll be shooting a lot more once they reopen, but you don't know what those baffles are made of. If they're pine, our expert will tell you, you can shoot a bullet through three two-by-tens and not slow it down, and it'll still go a mile and a half if they're not, if they're not, if they don't have concrete on there. So you actually need to understand the construction materials. Who's going to oversee that? Who's going to visit the gun club a year from now and make sure the baffles are being maintained, the logs are being signed? It's a very complex issue. If the zoning board is, is fine with this, and they say, you know what, it's great, we think it's safe, you can give them the permit. But then the town is liable for this. Seven years ago, the town wasn't liable because no one knew they didn't have a permit. The selectmen knew nothing about it. Now everyone knows about this, they know what's at stake. And that's why the judge has put it back on the town. That's the big picture here. Healy didn't lift the injunction. He left it in place and said, you go back to the town, if the town says you're safe and they'll give you the permits, I'll let you do this. And that's what's happening here. The judge isn't telling you what to do. You may agree with them, but all we're asking is you take the time and look at this very carefully and make your own decision. And I agree, you don't have to do what the judge says. You may agree with them at the end of the day, but you have to look at it. We spent years going through this. And I still tell people, a pistol bullet can go a mile and a half. People are shocked. They have no idea. We never objected to the skeet shooting because we understand that better. That's not a threat. But all of a sudden, if you have a new range and people assume it's safe and they're shooting a lot more, that means a lot more bullets are going to be aimed in the air. And if one or two of them get through, it's not just Heritage Trail. A bullet hit a house on Clap, a house that was built in 1890, well before the gun club was ever up there. And that cone of shooting, they call it an SDZ. In the military, they say you own your SDZ, so you own three miles of land going out. If someone just kind of moves a gun like that, you could get a bullet a mile this way. Bullets have hit booth hills. So, and there's a lot more development going up in the West End now. So it really starts with zoning, not Judge Healy. Because Judge Healy is going to go, do you have your permits? And if they have their permits, he's going to sign off on it. If you're okay with that, you're saying it's safe. You're telling the people that are walking up Bay's Lane, it's safe to be out there. This was never about hunters. As Mindy said, since the gun club was shut down, no more houses been hit. It's not hunters. It's the gun range, and it was unsafe. Is this safe or not? I don't know. I just found about, about the meeting today. So we'd be happy to look at it, but no one, no one informed us about it. But it's, it's broader than Heritage Trail. It's Clap, it's the West End, it's old politics. You are a field like that, you go out a mile and a half, and those are the affected people in the West End.
I don't mean to argue with you, but this was a, this was a range deciding and construction plan approved by the Superior Court back on January 29th, 2015, in the course of, in course of your litigation. You're telling, you're telling us you, you didn't know about this?
Oh, the meeting tonight?
No, I'm talking about--
Oh, no, no.
You're pointing at that and said, I didn't know anything about it.
No, no, the most recent ones, no, I didn't.
What do you mean? That's, that's not recent. That's from 1995.
Oh, I thought there was--
I mean, I'm sorry, 2000, January 29th, 2015. All, all Mr. Gard did, Attorney Gard did was, was, was sort of condense it down to some important points.
I wanted some information, I'm just saying--
No, no.
Even with Judge Healy's final decision, we didn't agree with anything. And you can say, why did you appeal, why didn't you appeal? It costs a lot of money. And Judge Healy told us, he was going to let them reopen. He was going to find a way for them to reopen. But he was also very clear, they could not reopen until they went back and they got all their permits and all the building codes. And so basically, he's put it on you. So--
I have to disagree. Not in the sense that you think. He's not telling us what, what's safe. This is, this is a pretty detail, and I know Judge Healy, I've had trials in front of Judge Healy. He's very smart, he's very thorough, and I'm telling you, this is a guy who doesn't cut corners. He, I'm sure, took a great deal of time.
And my only point is, if you're okay taking that verbatim, then, then that's fine.
But this is, you know, and, and I think it's really clear that all of these incidents with, with the bullets that hit various houses happened in the absence of this design at all. This, the, the range wasn't buried. You're, you're telling me it's basically buried now, right?
Correct.
Okay? The range wasn't buried, there was no baffle system. The range wasn't buried, there was no baffle system. I have to tell you, I, I'm, I think it's an interesting discussion, and certainly I'm, I'm thinking about it, but I don't feel like I have the expertise, there are no experts here, you know, both sides, to go over, you know, days' worth of testimony about what's adequate, what's not adequate. This has got to be a design that's compliant with something, right? It's got to be compliant with some sort of, there's standards on these things, and I'm sure standards-
There's recommendations.
They don't have standards on, on gun, on, yeah, I would have thought so.
Well, that's, that's all I meant to say.
Yeah.
As I said, if you're comfortable with what Judge Healy put out there, I feel strongly, if the town is going to sign off on it, they need to have a little more involvement than saying the judge, you know, this is what the judge-
Like, what do you, what do you mean by a little more involvement?
Well, I, I think if the judge felt that strongly, he would have lifted the injunction and said, go ahead.
No, he can't lift the injunction until it's done. You have to understand the legal process by which it's done. He has to see that this is all constructed in compliance, all the building permits, and this is the guy who's going to look at that and make sure that everything's done. It's going to be, it's, they're not just going to come up one day and say, hey, we're done, Neil, give us the permit, you know? There's going to be inspections to make sure, and until, until the inspections show that it's been constructed in compliance with the plans, there's no permit. And if there's no permit, the injunction's not getting lifted, not one day sooner.
Okay.
Yes, sir?
Chris Conley, Heritage Trail. So when Duggan looked at the plan, it's going to be stamped by an engineer, and he's going to see that, an engineer looked at it and said, you can build it this way. And that is going to tell Mr. Duggan that you can build this plan and it's going to stand up to wind loads, snow loads, whatever. What it's not going to do is tell you, ironically, what it's designed to do. It's not going to tell you how it's going to stop the bullet. How it's going to stop a bullet is really the big question here. You know, this plan is based on two main apparatuses of safety. The first is the control of the shooters, and I don't see how zoning can approve a plan where that is a half of the plan. I mean, you can't, zoning isn't going to go and police the gun club every time somebody's on the, on the range looking to shoot something. So what you have to do is approve a plan that is foolproof, basically. You have to be sure that whenever somebody fires a gun on, on the range, that a bullet is going to stay within its boundaries. This plan doesn't do it. The no-blue-sky system is designed to, not to stop bullets, but destabilize them. So when you destabilize a bullet, it still has enough energy to make it a mile, mile and a half. That's what hit my house in 2005, was a destabilized bullet. I've got a picture of it right here.
Tell us the circumstances, what, how it happened.
Okay, so I found the bullet in my driveway, and it was a Saturday morning, and I called the police. We looked at the garage door, this was the second bullet to hit my house. And we talked to Sergeant Eubony, who was at the Citroen Police at the time, and also a gun club member, and he said that the bullet went through something on the range and made it all the way to my house. You can kind of see it here, where the impact was on the side of the bullet, not the nose. So it went through a ward at the gun club, made it a mile, or whatever, half mile down the range and hit my house. So that's still the same plan that they have. They have baffles on the plane, on the range right now. It didn't work then, all they're doing is-
Not these baffles though, right?
Yes, same exact thing.
Same thing, exactly?
Well, it's 20 feet up. It's not the whole length of the range, but-
So it's not the same?
Well, it's the same design, it's just shorter.
The berm isn't as high. The berm isn't as high, the existing berm. The baffles don't cover the full 50 feet of the range. The, I mean, I appreciate everything that's been said, but I'm, when you say that a two-by-four will not stop, or a one-and-a-half-inch piece of pine will not stop a bullet, as I look at these plans, and there are images of shooters angling their weapon up so that it can, and whether the projectile will strike the berm, you're looking at going through probably a minimum of five, two by, you know, five-
Maybe, maybe, it could be nothing.
And, and, yes, I can, you're perfectly right, but we cannot, number one, I'm not here to litigate or to interpret this plan. This is, this is not the zoning board's purview. We are, we have a plan before us that was vetted in court by both sides. It is, it appears to be, I have a small version of it, but it appears to have a stamp of some sort that, you know, the author of it is-
Carl Fargus.
Carl Fargus, the gentleman that you've been speaking to. And he is, he's outlining this as an appropriate solution to a safety issue that the court has reviewed. And I'm not here to decide whether that's, that's, I'm not questioning him or the court's decision in that respect. I'm questioning, in my mind, simply that we have a zoning bylaw which allows a use in a residential zone of recreational use. The Rod and Gun Club has existed there prior to zoning, so it has to be existing non-conforming aspect. But even on their, under our existing bylaw, it's allowed by special permit. And the, the members of the Rod and Gun Club or the leadership of the Rod and Gun Club are here to ask us to issue a special permit that allows us the opportunity to discuss it in open forum, to have input from the public, and to decide on a very simple sense if it is, if it meets our zoning. And I guess, but to suggest that they already have these safety features in place is to suggest that this plan before us is no change, and that's clearly not the case. This is a significant change. And it's a significant change which has been vetted at length, as we've been told for years. And the place to argue whether or not the plan is appropriate was probably before the judge, because the judge has decided that this is an acceptable plan. So I, that's, I'm, I'm just, that's my position on it. We're, we're looking at zoning. We're not looking at design, redesigning this plan, or going back to things in 19, in 2009 or 2007 or-
His decision not based on zoning, though, that's the difference.
But that's the point, no.
That's the one thing he loses us.
That's what we're talking about, is zoning. Everything else that you're talking about, it's nothing to do with zoning. Our zoning is, our zoning states that it is an allowed use in a residential loan with a special permit.
But any creation, which Mr. Duggan said this was, a creation, should be not detrimental to a neighborhood.
Should not be more detrimental. That's an important, that's an important distinction.
Substantially more detrimental, and-
That I tried to make before.
What existed right on that site was wooden.
No.
Yeah.
Of Rod and Gun Club. I'm sorry, to clarify, the standard is, should not be substantially more detrimental than the previously allowed use. And the previously allowed use was a firing range. Now, I understand, and we'll certainly still hear from you, I do understand that a firing range, which then was the subject of a cease and desist order, and then was the subject of the injunction, but those matters have been resolved. There, a firing range was allowed, and to be honest, is still allowed on this location. The question before us is whether the proposed additions to that firing range are more detrimental. There's at least an argument that what we're reviewing, the sole purpose of the improvements that are before us are to add safety to the site. If we were being asked the question, is shooting guns on this location in such proximity to your homes, is that a detriment to the neighborhood? If that was the sole question before us, I think you might get some very different votes from this board. I would certainly be reviewing my vote very differently. But I don't view that as the question before us. I, and maybe it should be, and that's an issue for another time, but I'd, I'd like to at least have you folks understand the question that is before us, at least as we view it. And it's whether these additions to this gun range are more detrimental than if these additions aren't made.
Sir?
My name's Ernie Foster, I live 109 Clap Road, so I'm also part of the neighborhood. I'm in favor of the gun range. I feel that with a safer environment, maybe there'd be less shooting in the woods that we're experiencing now. What Neil was trying to say is, there's people hunting, and 500 feet from a dwelling is the Massachusetts state legal distance, which is extremely close to a house, if you think about it. Without places to go to shoot safety, or safely, I should say, people are going to hang out in those woods and they're going to shoot. And we have a lot of woods in the West End, in the South Swamp, North End. I'd just like to have you know, not the point from a neighbor, who feels safer if the range is built.
Thank you. Anyway, just let me see if anyone else, there's people outside, does anybody outside the room have any questions or comments? Anyone else? Sir?
Sure. My name is David Roman, I'm a member of Citroen Rod and Gun Club, and I have a couple of points that I'd like to make that hopefully alleviate some of the concerns of the neighbors.
Just your address, too, sir?
I live in Colassus, actually, 65 Paulson. Number one, they talk about, you know, the nine-millimeter and how powerful it is, but to purchase ammunition, they have what they call a range load, which is not as intense as a normal round that a cop or a bad guy would shoot. So therefore, it's not as powerful, it won't go a mile and a half, it won't go a spark. And number two, they talked about the inch-and-a-half pine backstop beyond the berm. Now, if they put concrete there, that would cause a ricochet. It would absorb the impact of the round. The pine would absorb the impact, and it may or may not go through, but it wouldn't go bouncing off, you know, potentially hitting someone within the confines of the Rod and Gun Club. And that's why I'll ask some-
Okay, thank you. Sir?
My name's Ken Loring, I live in Citroen 11 Conroy Terrace, I'm a member of the club. And my position on this stuff thing is I support it, because it improves the safety for the town, it improves accessibility for people who are interested in this sport. So I would just ask you to keep an open mind, and let's not review what has already been done by the judge. So I'm supporting it, I'm a town resident, I use the club. And I used it, by the way, way before any changes were made, and there were literally no rules. So, you know, who knows what happened there in the woods? I don't know, but I support it.
Thank you.
Peter Friling, 62, Rhea, Woodville Road. Let me go back to the gentleman just spoke on my group there, and we're roughly 350 feet from the gun club. And, you know, it's in a residential area, it's a non-conforming use, and I, it's a residence, it's surrounded by residences, and somebody else has said the residents are closing in. There's a lot more residences there when, since the 1940s, 50s, when they first started up. Excuse me. There have been, you know, living that close, I can substantiate the sounds of the different rifles that have been discharged over the years, and it wasn't the, hopefully, the control that will be with the new regime that, that seems to be there now, but being that close, I'm just concerned of ricochet. They're talking about a mile and a half, you know, a lot closer than that. Now, I would like to see the board maybe raise the berm a little to keep the noise down. I think the noise is a detriment to the, you know, to the neighborhood, as far as the real estate values. If you're going to buy a house, would you buy it there, or just buy the other end of Also, it might be a minor point, but now they're allowed, the shotguns start at 11:00 on Sunday, and, yeah, that's, we can accept that, but now they're going to start at 9:00? I mean, if, if this, this can be a little wiggle room, and maybe some negotiations, maybe if everybody can come out happy, but maybe there should be some, you know, some discussion between, you know, what will work to keep the bullets from leaving the range, and, and so everybody could walk away with a, I'm not going to say a silent gun range, but something that would be acceptable, you know, as far as the bullets leaving and the noise to the surrounding, maybe.
Thank you. I think the, I think that, I don't think they put in a 9:00, they said no shooting before 9:00 AM. I would assume that the gun range could make a later start time. It's just not going to, you're not going to see it at 8:00 or 7:00 in the morning.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't know whether that's what the judge said, or that's-
That's what the judge said, you know, but, but I, I don't think anybody's going to complain if the gun club wants to start at 11:00.
Okay, well-
You know, these are the minimum, you know, that he, that he has said.
In past years, there would be something that, let's say they're not, they're supposed to start at 11:00. In past years, they, all of a sudden, you'd hear gunfire at 8:00, 9:00 in the morning, you'd call and say, well, they got special permission to start early. Who gives them the special permission? That's the question.
Good question, I don't know.
Yeah. I would call the station, and you can go back and check in the logs, you know, I just, I just want to report loud gunfire at Rod and Gun Club, because it wasn't under the normal hours that they were accustomed to, you know, to operate.
Okay. You've been patient. You have, I know you have something else.
Thank you. I just would-
Just say your name again for Annie.
My name is Mindy Conley, I live in Heritage Trail. So I would like to, again, impress upon the board that there is a lot at stake for the plaintiffs here, and we're not asking for a relitigating of the issues. We certainly didn't want to rehash anything before Judge Healy, and it was pretty clear from Judge Healy's order that as a first step in multiple steps, that the gun club could be permitted to come before the zoning board with its plans. To the extent that the zoning board itself has conditions under the bylaws, as it is charged to protect the safety of its residents, it's not beyond this board's requests to the gun club to provide more information. And to that extent, I would ask you to please, for making any decision, look at the materials that I filed with the board, considering we were not notified, and we didn't have a chance before today to present any information, to perhaps address some of the issues that are brought up by this gun club in their application. So please take a look at the information that I've submitted, which includes the complaint, as well as an SDZ, as well as pictures of bullet holes, of exited bullets that had penetrated the shooting shed, which is on the 50-yard, as well as the existing trellis system. Please take a look at the information in terms of additional information that would be completely pertinent to a very important issue for the neighbors at Heritage Trail. In terms of what is before this board, I would suggest as well that it's not an intensification of use, it is the addition of a 50-yard range. They never received permits to braid raised trees, build berms, build backstops, build structures, essentially at a second range. And it's clear from the language that Mr. Duggan had put in his cease and desist letter that the addition of a 50-yard range was illegal, and beyond any ability of the gun club to operate, because they had not received the necessary permits. So the question before this board, after reviewing the information, is, is the addition of a 50-yard range a substantial detriment to the neighborhood? It's not just an intensification of use, we're talking about an additional range, which up until 2009 had been the source of bullet strikes in the neighborhood. That being said, in doing the analysis, it's not also beyond the board to request additional information to determine whether or not the addition of a 50-yard range is detrimental to the neighborhood, in particular, asking the gun club to provide an SDZ analysis, which they haven't done. Provide a certification from their expert, not that their expert has to come here and testify before you, but additional paperwork, so that if the board needs to rely on information to make its analysis as to whether there is a substantial detriment to the neighborhood, they can see from an engineering perspective, this engineer says no, our engineer says yes.
Excuse me, may I just ask, you're talking about a lot of information-
Excuse me. May I just ask, you're talking about a lot of the information you're asking us to request. Was this information available to the judge of the Superior Court when the case was being litigated?
They, they had an expert that was discredited at trial as not being-
I'm just simply saying, the judge made a decision. Did the judge have access to this information?
The judge found that we weren't an SDZ. Yes.
He had access to all this information. I'm simply asking a simple question. The information you're asking us to request, did the judge have access to this information?
The judge does not have, from what I understand, new plans have been submitted to the zoning board.
But that's, you're not talking about the plans. You're asking us to request information from the applicant, that I believe sounds like it's already been presented to the court. And the court made their decision based on all that information. It seems to me to be, you know, misuse of this board's time to request the same information when the, when the court has made the decision, as we've said, over an extensive review. We're not, we are all volunteers on this board. I'll read anything that people put before me. I'll listen to any testimony that people bring before me. But to open up a investigation as to the safety, when the judge has indicated that these measures satisfy his concern about the safety of this range, seems to be well beyond the purview of this board or the requirement of this board.
Can I get something for a moment?
You know what? We're going to move on to a couple. We have three more people. First of all, do you have an issue?
Yeah, I was just wondering, I'm having an issue with the TV, so I just wanted to, is there any way I can take like a three minute break and fix it?
Yes.
Just because it's not recorded.
Yes, we're going to do that so we can record it.
You can say whatever you want.
No, you can't say anything.
Can we recess?
Yeah, we're in quick recess. And then we'll take other people. Annie, do you want to pass those out?
Please.
The TV is active.
We're going to get go, we're going to get going. They're still having technical issues, and we just can't wait. So as soon as John gets back, there's a couple more people that, that had some comments previously before we had to break, had their hands up over there. I'm going to give the applicant, I'm going to give the board, applicant first, and then the board, Neil, any other time. And then we will decide where we're going from here tonight. So we'll get going in just a minute or two.
Chairman, can I just finish my sentence from what I was asked?
I mean, literally, yeah, because I honest, Ms. Connolly, we've given you a great deal of time to speak, and it's important to let other, the applicant hasn't said a word for over an hour, which is great restraint.
So I was handed my documents back. Would you like me to?
Yes. So we're going to go back on the record, first of all, with this. Yes, if you could, that's a, a great deal of, I thought it was copies for everybody. So if you could scan them in and email them to Annie, the zoning secretary, she'll get them to us. I don't know if a vote's going to be taken tonight or not, but if not, you know, they'll be there. So what was the final thing you wanted to say?
This was what I wanted to show you. This is a surface danger zone map. It's one page. And the burden's not on the zoning board to come up with the information. This is something that can be done by the applicant as part and parcel of demonstrating that the 50-yard range with its improvements are not going to be a danger to Heritage Trail or their surrounding neighbors, in particular that their shot ball will land on their property. And this is the missing piece. And this is what I would like the board to, to consider by determining whether a 50-yard range is a detriment to the surrounding neighborhood because our ballistics expert has come up with this surface danger zone, which has not been refuted. And going back to Mr. Tibbetts-
Was it, was this presented to the court?
So-
Was that report, was that presented to the court?
I would like to draw your attention-
I'm asking a simple question, yes or no. Was it presented to the court?
I apologize for not being able to give the yes or no. The court's order was conditional.
I would like to know if that was presented to the court.
This was presented to the court.
Thank you.
We could not do a subsequent SDZ because the gun club was missing information such as activities.
I'm not here to rehash the court. I'm simply asking if you're asking us to get new information or information that the court has already reviewed. That's my simple question.
The court could not review that information because the gun club needs to fill in the blanks before another SDZ can be done. And that's what we are requesting, is that the gun club answer-
I understand. And I don't mean to, I do mean to cut you off. I'm sorry at this point because we've said, we've heard this. So, sorry. Sir.
My name is Mike Kinnahan. I live in Tilden Road, Citrood, Massachusetts. I've been a resident of the town for a number of years. I'm not a lawyer or any of this stuff, and it does seem like this is a bit disingenuous where the court has gone through this stuff that she's recognized, that, you know, all this technical stuff has gone on and on and on in front of the court, and there's been an opinion. And I'm not here to argue that. I just think that a lot of this paperwork that keeps getting put forth in front of you seems a little disingenuous and kind of like a rope of dope. So that's my personal comment. The rest of it, I would just like to say, as a resident, my daughter and I have a bond where we shoot together. It's something that we do. She's a teenage girl. It's something she actually enjoys. Not that many things that, you know, a dad in his 50s can do with his teenage daughter. It's something that we really have a good time doing. You know, the Citrood Rod and Gun Club, we've shot skeet there. She loves it. The members, the older members in particular are very helpful to the young kids. This is a resource that we have in this town. They're not going to build any more of them in, you know, in the South Shore, probably Massachusetts. This is something I don't think we can afford to lose. As a resident, I think it adds value. Not all kids are, you know, bat and ball types of kids, you know. Some kids like the outdoors. The club offers a lot of things like that for kids. Again, I have a teenage daughter. She loves it. I love it. It's kind of like a family. And, you know, I'm very sympathetic to safety concerns, and I do think that, you know, whenever you're handling firearms, safety is the most important thing, you know, absolutely. I'd just like to say that I think that what the club has done is actually, you know, really gone through the gates to come up with a plan to be as safe as possible, certainly to your point, you know, safer than it was. So that's all I'll say.
Okay. There was a couple other hands over in that corner. We've lost them. Okay. Neil, do you have any final comments at this point?
Only on the notice, the law requires, well, first of all, when we, when the zoning Board of Appeals notices, they're required to go to the assessors, get the assessors' abutters list. In this type of case, the abutters that are notified are within 300 feet. I think if someone had thought about it, we probably, and I have to think that Heritage Trail folks perhaps were on top of this, hopefully before that. But it would have been appropriate, but that's, we get so much-
But not required.
It's not required, and you get, when the secretary gets the assessors, the abutters' list, that's what's on it. And I don't necessarily pay attention to the abutters' list, and so that is why.
Okay.
So it certainly wasn't anything intended.
Just before you do your final, does anybody else on the board?
I have a few questions.
You, you may. You haven't hardly asked anything.
I started, started fast and then trailed off. So this, this club's been around for a long time. I take it from what I've read that you wrote in the past. The, as I understand it, they've been shooting on the property way back, and there is a pre-existing use certainly not disputed with respect to this 100-foot, 100-yard range.
That's correct.
Okay. At some point in time, they started shooting in another location on the property, which has become what we've called, we're calling now the 50-yard range.
Correct. That's correct.
Okay. Is the 50-yard range a pre-existing use? These are separate uses, as I'm understanding this now.
No, I think we established, I don't have my letter in front of me that I wrote eight years ago, seven years ago.
We have the-
Yeah, we have, I have the second letter. I don't have the first letter that I wrote. But I think I established when I issued the decision, cease and desist, that it had been put in place subsequent to, you know, when the zoning-
Subsequent to.
Yes, subsequent to the zoning change that was required, well, required. Yeah, in other words, no, it wasn't, the 50-yard range, you could tell by aerial photographs that it had been cleared out. There was some talk among some of the members that they'd use archery out there, which is a very good possibility. You know, just that we set up targets on the trees and shoot bows. And so that, that was, but the actual clearing, my, my, you know, any, anytime you expand a non-conforming use, intensify it, add, add a building, such as that, without a building permit, that requires a review by the zoning board of appeals.
Yeah, that's, okay. So I guess this is my question, then. They're, they're looking for relief under section 820, right?
I think that he listed a couple of different areas.
And the other, the other two.
Multiple.
Multiple areas, yeah. Yeah.
And I just go to MGL, Chapter 48, Section 6, which I think is-
We didn't have to read that again.
Yeah.
Because it's extremely confusing.
Yeah.
Do you think, you think section 6 operates independently here?
Of 810?
Yeah, in other words, if I, if we decide that 810 doesn't apply, 820 doesn't apply.
You guys remember all these little sections?
But it is, is it a non-conform, because I thought you said that it's, as a club, it's became conforming in '74.
It's conforming under special permit.
It, 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 yeah, became non-con, it was conforming when it started. There was no bylaw that, that-
The entire range.
Yeah, the entire range.
But I think you said, you said to me, we're only talking about the 50-yard range now.
Yeah.
That, and that became a use that was created at some point in time after-
After, yeah, yeah. I lose her on 1990.
So isn't it, isn't it unlawful use? It's never been permitted.
That's correct. That's why I put a cease and desist on them.
Right. And-
But you can cure that with a finding.
Under what section?
Under, well, I mean, I'm not the lawyer here, but-
You know this code better than I do.
I think so. I deal with gun clubs every day.
I don't need-
I know.
But-
Oh, okay. I see what you're saying. You're saying change of non-conforming use.
Yeah.
Well, which, which refers back to MGL 48, Section 6. Authorizing non-conforming use to, to be changed to a specified use not substantially different in character, and not substantially more detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming use, subject to following limitations.
Which one are you reading now, 820?
820, yeah.
The first, the first paragraph?
Yep. That incorporates Chapter 48, Section 6.
Right, right. So we're being asked to authorize a non-conforming use to be changed to a specified use.
Right. We're, we're being asked to grant a special permit to allow a conforming, to allow a use of-
Change to a specified use.
Extinction of a non-conforming use is what I-
Which is pre-existent.
Yes, okay.
Well, it preexists in what? Isn't that that whole case we just read?
That's my, my argument, my-
No, I don't, I don't, as I read into this, I, I think that's actually a more liberal interpretation of Section 6, 48, Section 6, that allows you, in certain instances, to take a, a gas station and turn it into a store.
Right. That's why I'm not sure this applies.
Yeah, I don't think 820 applies.
This is my problem. The standard, this goes back to our earlier discussion, the standard is, the thing is, is it substantially more detrimental than the pre-existing use? Neil's telling us, and I think he may be right, that this is not a pre-existing use. It's an illegal use.
I don't, I'm not sure that's what he's telling us. And if it is, I'm not sure. I agree.
I think, I think I could probably simplify this a bit. So in my closing remarks, I had intended to mention that in Neil's letter in 2008, he did, in his research, he, he points out that it's clear from this decision and inform, information derived from my interviews that a firing range for the use of pistols and rifles existed prior to the grant of the special permit in 1987. So what I'm getting at, the reason that I point that out is because there's always been pistol and rifle shooting at the club. It was, we have another range. It's called the 100-yard range. That is not before you tonight. We are not asking you to reopen that range. We didn't ask the judge to reopen that range. That range was subject to the injunction. What we're asking you to do in deference to, a difference of opinions as to whether or not this 50-yard range was in use prior to 2000, when the Google Earth photographs show it being cleared or not, we're asking you to allow us to relocate that pre-existing non-conforming use of pistol and rifle shooting to this location on our premises.
So you're asking that-
We're not asking, yeah.
The activity that occurred at the 100-yard range be transferred to the 50-yard.
Essentially, correct, yes. And with this, of course, subject to this range design. So it, yes, we talk about substantially more detrimental expansions, extensions of non-conforming uses. I mean, could someone argue that this is an extension or expansion? I guess. It would just, because we're increasing the area that we're shooting from on our property, but we're not changing the use. We're actually restricting to-
Yeah, to-
The same use.
Since when, when was the use, when did the use come first?
Since 1948, when this club was first established, they was using, they were shooting rifles and handguns on this property from the beginning, always.
That's why I asked the question, is, because a use is an activity that occurs. And here, there's, there were activities, shooting at the 100-yard range, and then at some point, they expanded the use to shoot at the 50-yard range without a permit.
Correct, correct. So the pre-existing non-conforming use at that location on our premises was not permitted. That's why we're here today. As Neil said, we're fixing that.
So what you're asking, the pre-existing use, so this is good.
Yeah, if we wanted to add another skeet field, we've had skeet for years, we would have to come to you and say, this is our use. We want to put it over here.
But this is important to the analysis of then what becomes substantial detriment. So what you're really asking is that the use, the prior use at the 100-yard range be transferred to-
Relocated.
Relocated, for better words.
Yep, relocated to the 50-yard location. Correct.
So then our, now-
I'm sorry. We're not shutting down the 100-yard range. We're not relocating.
No.
It's an extension. And, and that's the language my law uses as well.
Well, the 100-yard range is closed under the injunction, and there's no foreseeable opportunity for that.
It's not going to open again.
Well, I-
Oh, I didn't realize. I thought it was still operating.
No, no, because we, we, well, again, it's only there to shoot pistols and rifles, and we can't shoot pistols and rifles under the injunction. So we're essentially abandoning that for, for all intents and purposes. I don't think there's enough, well, the injunction is when it stopped.
Well, it's, it's court action.
Yeah, the court action tolls any kind of two-year abandonment period. But nonetheless, it's not before you this evening, and we didn't, it's not, we're not adding that, this 50-yard range to the 100-yard range. We're essentially substituting it.
Expansion.
Putting the issue of bullets, leaving the premises aside, obviously an important issue. In terms of a use, if a, if a one-screen movie theater, a one-lane bowling alley was allowed, wasn't allowed, and it was a pre-existing non-conforming use, they're putting up another lane.
Except-
That's what they're doing. They're not changing the use. It's not a new use.
Except that where, where the bullets can travel, it makes a difference to, to, to me at least, as to, as to where they're traveling from. Are they traveling from where the 100-yard range was before? Okay, well, that's, you know, that's something that the cameras had to live with for decades.
And that's a question of whether the intensification is a, is a detriment, which is a valid question and is well within our purview. But I don't think we can, because that issue is so dire here, because we're dealing with bullets, I don't, I don't think we should view that to be more than it is in terms of, it's an extension of a use. It's not a new use because it's a new location. I think it may be the, the, you know, the high stakes because it's bullets makes us maybe think that.
But it affects the analysis of whether it's more substantially, whether doing it now in this other location is more substantially detrimental.
It absolutely affects it now.
Having done it where-
No disagreement there.
Doing it for, you know-
Frank, if you, if you look at your, I know she's happy, but I was getting paid 192. I mean, I see it as a modification of a non-conforming use.
Where are you at?
Paid 192. Modification of non-conforming use. And that's where the powers test comes in.
Yeah. I'd like to piggyback on Anthony's suggestion that if you have a bowling alley and you add a lane, you're adding a lane. If you have a marina, and you have pre-existing selling fuel at the dock, and you, you take your underground tank and you put it above ground to improve the safety of that activity, which is customary and usual.
Citrood Harbor Yard Club wants to add a building. They're a pre-existing non-conforming, you know, social club.
That's a social club.
They came before, and the difference here is they did it without coming before the zoning board.
Correct. So they're, we're looking to remedy-
Now they're here.
Correct. We're looking to remedy an issue, but customary and usual activities of a rod and gun club, I would argue, could be easily established as being shooting firearms, shooting, you know, using a fishing rod.
Yeah, that's, that's one of, that's one of the tests.
Using a bow and arrow.
Yeah.
Those are all customary and usual.
Yeah.
In the West End, by right, under our bylaws, you can hunt. You can discharge firearms as long as you're 500 feet from a residence. 500 feet? Yeah. So that the firing of weapons, of firearms in the West End is not an unusual- So that the firing of weapons, of firearms, in the West End is not an unusual u, activity. In fact, what the rod and gun club is before us asking to do is create a confined, engineered, court-reviewed structure for the activity, which is allowed by right.
Right.
They could walk over there on their own property and shoot in any which direction. They wouldn't, I would presume they don't do that because they are probably, why most of us, laypeople in the appropriate use of firearms. And they have, I'm sure there are insurance policies and other things that the club has, which put them on notice to do, to act wisely. So I don't argue that, I argue that this is not an intensification, it's a continuation of an activity, which is usual and customary in a social club, described as a rod and gun club. It is actually a reduction because we're going from 100-yard range to a 50-yard range. The, the 50-yard range is designed to operate in a safer manner than the preexisting 100-yard range. So, I don't see any argument that this is an intensification, it's actually a reduction, and it's, it's improved safety.
With, with one exception, I think, and I, let me ask the applicant the question now. So everybody used to, some people would shoot at the 100-yard range and some people would shoot at the 50-yard range, right? Everybody now has got only one choice.
Yep.
They gotta go to the 50-yard range.
Correct.
So it's gonna be a greater usage of the 50-yard range.
Yeah, well, of course, yeah, I mean...
I mean...
Greater use of the 50-yard range, but not the...
I have, I'm, I'm, maybe I'm missing something, I, are we saying the 100-yard range is being shut, closed down, or just being a skeet? That's what I thought you said.
Yeah.
He's saying the injunction, the injunction covers both being used.
And it's not gonna be reopened.
And he's not asking...
Correct, well, yeah, not unless we come back from you or we go to the judge and we have another plan that actually would work, but we're not there.
Well, and it's a use, so if you go into that...
The injunction's not gonna be lifted on that, at this point.
Correct, correct.
The ordinance, the bylaw authorizes the use as a gun club in that area, in the R1.
The only, the only location that we've applied for to shoot handguns and rifles is at this location, the, the range, the new range design.
At the 50-yard, okay, that's a revelation to me.
Is that...
I'm sorry.
And that change, that kind of, that changes, I think.
I'm, I'm going with Neil, that's your question.
What's that, so explain it, where are you at, then?
Where am I at?
Yeah, with, with the...
I, I think it, I think it changes, and I think Neil is right, that, you know, that we have to look at the three-part test to concern the trouble that I'm having, is, is that it changes the degree of use of the 50-foot range.
But then, but then you, if your bylaw allows a use, you can go to the next step and, and allow that change by the, virtue of the special permit.
Right, yeah, we can do it.
Right.
But, but then the question is, what do we look at? What, you know, what factors do we need to consider? And then I go back to my question again, you know, is, is it a substantial detriment compared to what?
I think you, you pointed out that, you know, is this an intensification? Are there more people gonna use this 50-yard range? No, not more people than before because they were using the 100-yard range, and then this 50-yard range was created without a permit, so it's gonna be the same people shooting, there's not an additional range.
Well, people weren't using both ranges, was that what you...
Well, no, no, you, you're correct, they weren't using, you would use one or the other, you could use the, the 100-yard range would be more for a rifle, the 50-yard range was more for handguns. So now we're gonna be confined to a 50-yard range for both.
Really?
Correct.
So they weren't used simultaneously?
Yeah, they were used simultaneously, sure, but by, you wouldn't, you might shoot a rifle on the 100, and then you pack up your stuff.
If you're looking at it from a gross point of view, there's gonna be more people concentrated in a smaller area, giving greater use to the 50-yard range because that's the only place you gotta go.
Well, but the other way to look at it is, if there were two 10-person ranges and they were both in operation, there were 20 people shooting.
Right.
Now there's one 10-person range, there's only 10 people shooting at any given time.
Are there, are there shooting stations?
It's gonna, it's gonna be used more.
You don't just get to all crowd in and start shooting.
No, I, I...
The stations where they stand and...
But also, the, the use of rifles have been restricted too, so that's been cut out of the 50.
I, I, yep, yep.
Which will, to, to Mr. Holland's point, it'll eliminate a lot of people from wanting to use that range, the people that wanna site in a, a large caliber rifle are not gonna come to a 50-yard range, so...
There was a question asked earlier, or a statement, I guess, made about this not being a static range that people could move around.
Correct.
They're, they're, you're not gonna be confined to shooting from the shed?
They will, generally speaking, probably 95% of the shooting will be done from the shed, from a shooting line. However, this range is designed and has been approved by the judge as a dynamic range, where you can set up underneath the range in different areas to shoot. That is correct. It's not a static...
It's controlled.
Controlled.
Hopefully one at a time.
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, you know, somebody back here can't shoot while somebody up there is shooting.
So the, the concern that I have, though, is that if, if, if you're in the, in the shed, there's only a certain way that, that you, you really can go, you know, it's forward and it's, it's toward the back of the range.
Correct.
Once you're out of the shed, you know, you can go like this, you can go like that.
But you can't shoot anywhere other than the shed.
It says in the rules, you're only shooting one direction.
You have to only shoot at the backstop in the rules, but even if there was a mistake or an errant discharge, we have 16-foot earth berms completely surrounding you, so it doesn't, this isn't just a trellis or a baffle system all by itself, it's encased in this earth berm. So the closer you get downrange in a dynamic, dynamic range, you're getting closer to the berms, there's even less likely that the, the projectile could leave because of the dirt so high around it.
So, can I ask my last question? How often are these wood baffles gonna get replaced?
Well, I think the court order requires us to do an annual inspection, so, and we have to keep monitoring them constantly to make sure that they are, you know, intact. So there is, that's part of our operating procedures that the judge has approved.
Yeah, there are no standards about it?
Well, it depends on the amount of use of the range, you know, we have a very small club, with only 200 members and probably only, maybe 40 that are active, 30 or 40 that are really active, so it, it would, it's gonna be based on wear and tear, I can't predict that, I don't think anybody could predict that, but we are under an obligation. And quite frankly, I would have no problem with a special permit condition that would require us to submit to an annual inspection by the building department, like you would for your liquor license. No, I mean, that's fine, I have no problem with that.
How about more often than annual?
I'm sorry?
More often than annual?
That's fine.
Too much, Neil, with the...
Well, yeah, I mean, whatever, that's fine, we don't, we have no problem.
I just think it's important to, to, if you're gonna, if you don't know the answer to that question.
Yeah, we don't.
And these baffles are so important that at least at the beginning, to establish some sort of track record as to how long it takes to...
I think, didn't they say, like, they thought this thing lasted 10 years? Yeah, yeah. Whatever the board feels comfortable, as far as an independent inspection goes, it's fine with...
Do you have a, do you have an insurance inspection on a regular basis? Is there an insurance inspection associated with your insurance policies?
I think we, I'm, I don't know, I just don't...
Just guessing.
Yeah.
The other thing is, I recognize that police departments utilize local ranges whenever possible to reduce costs in order to train their officers, and I, I'm envisioning a dynamic range as being of value to local police officers, police departments. Were that the case, I imagine that the police departments would want their officers in a safe environment, and they would at least do a inspection, a cursory inspection to make sure that the rules are being followed, that the site was safe, et cetera. So, again, I'm, it isn't like this is operating in a vacuum somewhere with just 200 members sitting around, you know, a wood stove, thinking, "Let's go out and plank it some cans." This is, it's, it's a club that has responsibilities both to their insurance carriers, their membership, and, and the license issuing authority, the police chief in town is, issues every license carried by any member of the board, of the rod and gun club who is using firearms, so...
We fully anticipate, once the range is built, in inviting the, you know, the local towns that abut us to enjoy the use of the range, of course, and we hope for that, that we've already had some communications with the safety officer at the Cituit Police Department, who did, we did deliver a copy of the package, the submittal package, to them, so that they would know where we, what we were up to and what we were doing, in case they wanted to comment or be here this evening. That would be Kenneth Bates, Sergeant Kenneth Bates is the one that is in charge of the training, I believe, as well as the licensing issue. So, if, if that's it, the two things I'd like to, Mr. Lynch, if you don't mind, the copy of the decisions, full copies with my notes on them, I will gladly leave them with you this evening.
I believe the resident is gonna get us a full copy, I guess.
Well, is that something different than what you have in your, your packet?
No, I think I gave you the small one, the second one, which is the motion to proceed with construction. I think I only excerpted the original order because it had the safety and, and operating plan stuff in it, so I'd be happy to, you know, drop this off and you can keep that, or email it, whatever you prefer.
All right.
I, I would just like to end by reminding the board and appreciating, thanking them for their time and the spirited debate and conversation we've had this evening. It is, certainly the gun club's intention is to get it right, we want to get it right, and that's why we're here. And by, and in that spirit, we hired Carl Vargas, who is our expert and the person who designed the range plan that is in your possession today, he is also the person who, that, that range plan has been approved by Judge Healy, he's also the person who wrote the book that Ms. Connolly put up today, the NRA Range Design Book. I just wanna, and I think that, just to remind everyone, and I apologize if your range design plans, the copies were so small, it was difficult to read, that Mr. Vargas wrote those plans, I should have been more specific about who was the, who we hired to do that. And it was important that we had the appropriate and correct person to design this range for everyone's sake. Thank you.
I'm, I'm sorry, Ms. Connolly, you know, we've been at this over two hours, we still have four other applications, so is this anything new that you'd like to say?
It is something new. In terms of the analysis that was just done by the zoning board, I think case law that self-inflicted nonconformity makes conforming structure and uses unprotected. So the moment the 50-yard became an operational range without the permission of the ZBA, they lost the argument and the right to argue that they had a preexisting nonconforming use in the form of the 100-yard range. And what this is, is an intensification of use, because when they doubled up on the ranges, they doubled up on the ability for shooters to shoot on two separate locations. Tonight is the first time we're hearing any representations that they're giving up on the 100-yard. There's been no statement like that filed before Judge Healy. This is also the first time that we're hearing any kind of specificity that 95% of shooting shall occur at the static, as a static range at the firing line, and this is precisely why an SDC cannot be completed until the gun club fills in the blanks. What kind of shooting activity? Who are you having here? Will there be police shooting? Is there going to be dynamic activities? Turkey shoots, muzzle loadings? We need to know these things so that the gun club can prepare an SDC, and SDC would put a lot of minds at ease in knowing then that the bullets will be contained on the property. I'm not a ballistics expert, no one in this room is a ballistics expert, we're just seeking reassurances based upon information 100% controlled by the gun club, that the addition of the 50-yard range with those protections in place keeps the bullets on the property.
Thank you. All right. No other questions from the audience? Anybody, what is the board, any comments, or what would, what's the board's pleasure on how to proceed here?
I just have a couple of the questions, I'll make a brief.
I'm not worried about you.
All right.
Add a few words.
Just, Steve, on the, on the safety changes of plans that the, I think the judge and you, the guys that talked about was, the one, the ratio's gonna change of guest...
Oh, yeah.
Members, one to one instead of two to one, so that's gonna also increase the volume of people allowed in at one time without a guest.
Correct.
Training hours, three hours per member.
Correct.
And then, the, the hours of the club, it's...
It's 9:00 AM to the, to the, when the light comes on in the parking lot for this range.
Which is actually dawn.
Dusk.
I mean, dusk.
Yeah.
Cameras?
Yes, everywhere, parking lot too, correct, on the range, parking lot.
Sign in, so everyone has to sign into the range if they're there, so there's a log of that.
Yes.
It will be maintained there, and then also...
Electronic key card as well, to get through the gate, to go to that range.
Right, so, so it's not open to the public.
Nope.
In other words, so you can't wander.
Not even open to the members unless they've taken the class, and then they gotta get the card, and then we just pull...
To be approved, and then if they're not a member anymore, their card gets...
Yes, gets, correct.
And then also, you know, if you, if you proceed with all this too, there's an as-built plan that's gonna be submitted, berm heights, you know, specs to the design, you know, size of the range, all that, all that stuff as well, so it's not...
It's not required in Judge Healy's order, but I don't see any other way you can do it, you have to submit to him that the prop, that the construction was done properly.
Right, that it meets that standard, I'm sure.
Yep, I'm recommending it, as-built plan signed with a wet signature by an engineer and architect.
Yep. That was it. Okay.
I, I hate to add to the discussion, but at this point, all of these, all of these orders from the court, they become an order of the court?
I'm sorry, Mr.?
All of, all of the, all of Judge Healy's findings and orders, that becomes an order of the court, correct?
Yes, they already are, they've already been, yes, they've already been filed.
And, and as you and I know, and maybe the, the audience doesn't know, if the gun club at some point doesn't comply with those orders, they could be brought for contempt in front of the court, correct?
Correct, sanction.
And, and Judge Healy's a whole lot scarier than you.
Than me?
Yes, he is. So I think that's important for people, that's important for people to know, because there is, you know, five years from now, yeah, five, five, five years from now, they're not doing what they're supposed to do, it's a contempt issue, and contempt, even civil contempt is punishable by jail time.
The other thing you could add to that, Mr. Reese, too, is that, you know, the, when we file the application to reopen the range, the as-built plan, the plaintiffs are gonna get noticed, they're gonna have an opportunity to be heard on that issue as well. So there will be probably a subsequent hearing, and then that will be vetted to make sure that it was built according to the operating, I'm sorry, the approved range design as well as implementation of the operating procedures.
Okay.
So this is, it doesn't end here, it doesn't end just filing an as-built plan like you would with the Board of Health Receptics System, it, it has to get signed off by him, and they'll, in all likelihood, I wasn't, I'm not representing him in that litigation, but I can assume that there will be a hearing notice date for that issue.
Will the board consider the paperwork that I'm sending tomorrow?
I think we have to...
I mean, it just depends on, I mean, we have to see, if you, if it closes tonight, you don't have to send it if you don't want to.
Well, I, I would like the board to have this documentation as part of their informed decision before making a vote on this application, because I do think that it will make a difference.
I'd like to read it.
Okay, so you would like not to make a decision tonight?
If, if it's okay with everyone, but I'm not a voting member on the particular one, so if the, the voting members decide it's not necessary, that's fine with me, but...
Well, Ed, you're a voting member, what's your, what's your preference?
I think it's taken a long time for this to go through the process, I think if we
I think if we can be provided the information in a PDF format through our secretary, that would be the last testimony I would like to hear on it. I would be happy to review it, and then on our March meeting, continue the, continue and simply take a, deliberate and take a vote. But I really don't wanna keep rehashing this.
Right.
It's been, this is about one of the longest hearings other than a 40B that I've sat in.
Right, I know.
I'll send this tomorrow.
Yeah. And you feel, how do you feel, the same way?
Well, if you give the information, if you give the information, but I think if we continue this to the next meeting, I think we should close the discussion and just...
I think we have an awful lot on in March. Could we do this in April?
You're asking me?
Yes.
Well, I, I guess I, maybe I could suggest closing the hearing tonight, but allowing the record to stay open for 24 hours to, so that Ms. Connolly could submit her materials. And that would give you the opportunity to review...
To discuss.
Right.
Yeah, that's, that's what I thought you were saying.
Yeah, I don't wanna be taking, you know, new documents for the next two months.
No, no, just leave it open for 24, 48 hours so that she can get her materials submitted, and then you can consider those at your, hopefully, next meeting, you would be able to vote on.
Except I do know we have an awful lot on for March. Would, would you be amenable to continuing to April?
Whatever you, you would need. Whatever the board would appreciate the time that they've given us so far, and we would like to have it as soon as possible.
I'd like to try to do it in March. It's, I think it's a relatively short deliberation.
If we're just reading and reviewing what we've done, and it's that much fresher, it's probably gonna shorten the deliberation.
Rather than wait 60 days to...
And, and I, whether or not we...
Whatever value we feel that, I think that, especially given what Neil pointed out, the complications in the abutters rule versus when we're dealing with the trajectory of firearms, it might be a nice accommodation to give to the folks affected.
Oh, absolutely. Okay, so, um, then, uh...
Can I ask one more thing, too?
Sure.
Could we get a copy of your 2008 decision and put that in the record?
It's in my file.
Okay. So, so, basically, the motion would be to...
Move to close, close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing and allow 24 hours to receive any additional documents for consideration, and deliberation only, no further discussion, deliberation and decision at our March meeting.
Well, I, I think only the documents that we have here. We wanna get the whole copy of the NRA book or other different materials.
I don't think she wants to give it. We're not looking at that.
They have a package right there.
We will not take it.
I do have one question that my client has asked me to ask, is that, is this, is the materials that Ms. Connolly will be submitting, are those new materials, or are they materials that were submitted in the litigation?
She, you'd have to ask her.
These are not materials presently before the ZBA that are reported.
Present, but you testified, you testified that these are materials that were presented before the court.
Um, these were materials presented before the court, but will help the ZBA in the present application.
Yeah, that's just...
I would just ask for a copy of what's being submitted.
Annie will send you anything that we get, and she'll send you a copy of Neil's 2008 order.
I have that actually.
Okay.
Yeah, I did get that from Neil's file.
All right. All right. So, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All favor?
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. You've been very patient.
I'm a high-priced engineer standing out in the hall.
I know, it's exactly what they... I hope you feel better.
Yeah, it looks great.
I just know we have a lot on.
Probably get tired.
That's all right. Yeah. Too many to march. Can we clear the room quickly, please, and quietly, and shut the doors after you?
When you get up.
Don't worry. I'm just kidding.
Thanks a lot, guys. Take it easy.
I wanna have an SD, SDZ for the judge here to present.
Oh, my gosh, that was almost everybody. Okay, Annie, what's our, hi. Thank you. Everything I do is great. Thank you. Thanks for coming. Okay. We're gonna move on to the next application. What's up next, Annie? I don't know where my paper went. Okay. Okay. Uh, 135 Camarons? I got it here. I got it here.
She in? Yeah.
Hello? Is one of you, uh, Mr. Coat?
Yep, I'm Arthur Coate, and my wife and I have submitted the application, and this is Doug Sanford who presented the, who put the material together that was packaged with the application.
Okay, hello. And so, um, thank you for being patient. You probably were all excited, you were third on the list, right?
I thought that was good.
And one, and then one was continuing, and I said, "Yoo-hoo." Okay, so you would like to, you have a house built in 1920. Um, you have an existing square footage print, footprint of 1336, and you propose a increase to 2309. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I have to tell you, I couldn't figure out on your map where the street was. And I, I meant to ask Mr. Mayor Beto about that, but he's hiding outside, so, um, where's the street? I see the Atlantic Ocean, and I see the Maguires. Is there a street somewhere in this?
Do you have the area view?
I have this. I wanna know on your plan, where's the street? I'm just a little...
There's a little, up at the top, a key map.
I know, but I still don't get it.
Is the street above the, the property is the question.
Is there a street?
It appears that, it appears that neither Concord Street or Howell Street above the property.
Street up here?
Is that true?
I, yes, there is an access that, uh, how do we describe this?
Do you have a copy of the land court plan that's referencing the deed by any chance?
That still, this still makes sense to me. I don't care.
I, I have an area view that would probably...
Here it is, here's Concord Street. Concord Street, that's the Atlantic Ocean.
Where's the house?
That's Concord Street, right here.
So, it doesn't abut any street?
No.
I don't think the land court would create a lot that didn't at least have easements rights out of the common.
Well, easements do.
Yeah, there are, there are easements to that property.
The street is here, and then the access into this property is this short stretch right here. I don't think it has any.
Okay, can you show me? So, here's, here's the, here's the house. Here's the ocean.
Okay.
The smaller version is the lot.
That's the abutting lot over here.
This is 36?
This house is that.
Okay. So, it's not on any street?
The access comes in from here.
Okay. So, it's not a street though?
Comes in from below here.
No. Looks like it's a private way along the rear of the lot, the, the west border of the lot, out to Lowell Street.
This is the street in here. Right here. This is the axle. That's the right of way.
Is this the, is this where, where's the deck?
Up there.
Okay, see, I'm a very visual person, so I have to orient this way. Okay, so we've got debt?
Turn it, turn it this way. The water's over here.
Okay.
So, this is the access coming in. Comes from the bottom edge of the plant.
Oh, bottom, okay, okay. So, we're going this way?
Correct.
Okay. So, I wasn't totally crazy?
No, not at all.
Okay. All right, all right, all right.
I guess my first question is, when, when land abuts a private way, the frontage measurement come from the private way? And the set, front setback and the like?
When, um, I mean, obviously, these houses were built long before zoning, before subdivision rules and regs.
Yeah.
So, um, he's, I think technically landlocked, but I believe, I'm, I assume there's easements. I, I actually did some research into this, 'cause Frank asked me a question, and the entire property was originally owned by somebody named Conway, was it?
Yeah.
Um, I wanna say Tim, but it was not Tim. And he, he sold off, um, the house, existing house that does front on Concord Street to Devaney, someone named Devaney.
Devaney, yeah.
Yeah, then Devaney sold to Coat?
No, we bought from Cronin, who originally owned, Cronin actually owned it.
Cronin, not Conway, Cronin. So, yeah, Cronin to Devaney, then Devaney to Coat, right?
No, we, we bought from Cronin.
And then you bought it, you bought it from, you, you bought it from Cronin too?
We bought, Devaney and myself, we bought, both bought from Cronin.
Okay, so I'd, yeah, so I'm just looking at my assesses card. So, so the interesting thing about, the question is, you've got a swimming pool that straddles two lots, all right?
Yes.
So, I'm making another assumption that there were easements, and this swimming pool was built with a building permit back in 1964, all right? When Cronin owned both lots, correct? He owned both lots, so he basically said, "Well, I'm gonna put a swimming pool, straddle both lots."
It may have been one lot. It was just one lot.
Well, it was one whole lot.
It was one whole lot.
But it was probably divided.
It was divided.
Yeah, and they, as far as I know, they never changed the lines, but I think what you're left with is even if there, you would, you could make an argument, well, the, the swimming pool at some point in time, um, when they sold the second lot, or they sold, separated the lots, it was in some kind of setback violation, but it was built 40, 50 years ago, so it's long past any enforcement.
Right.
There's an easement there. So, I, I think, you know, you're looking at a pre-existing nonconforming situation.
Right. I'm just having trouble figuring certain things out.
Yeah, it was, it was, I emailed you.
Yeah, you did. I'm reading, reading it again. You got it right.
And I, I would hope these gentlemen will clear up any missing...
Yeah, it'd be, I'm gonna say, there were, there were, there are two easements on both, on these properties.
Yeah, but where's the lot line on this side?
There are two.
Wait, they call the chair.
You know what I, what I also don't, this is really screwed up to me. Where's Mr. Mayor Beto? Why can't we get him in here? Is he gone? Oh, Mr. Mayor Beto, could you come up here and help us out? Help me out anyway? I don't, I'm not sure where the lot lines are, and I'm not sure that this is the setback.
Does he represent these gentlemen?
I don't think he's in this.
This is his plan.
He did this in 1996.
It's his 1996 septic plan.
Should be able to read it better than I read it.
I don't think he's prepared to do it.
Oh, Paul, come on. You can do that.
This is, uh...
If he can't read it, we're in a lot of trouble, that's all I think.
What are you looking at?
I, I would like you to show me where the lot line is on the one side of the page.
Trying to pull a land court case right now, so we can get the legal description.
Sarah, this plan that, that Ross did was a septic plan, okay? So, what they've done here is they've overlaid a septic plan with what the architect did. Footprint of the house.
To, to a certain extent...
So, not a site, the Ross engineering is not technically a site plan. It won't be submitted as a site plan.
And so, we don't, we don't have a site plan, and right now, we don't even have a deed with a legal description.
Okay.
'Cause the deed references a lot on the plan, and we don't have that plan, right?
Well, the town has the deed and has a copy of the deed and the, and the easement plan as well.
Oh, I, I'm sorry, I don't have an easement plan. That would be very useful.
There should have been two descriptions of the, of each, of the two easements, I believe, that went with the application.
No, let's see.
Did they come with the application?
No. So, that, that would be helpful. And that probably also shows the lot and its entire...
You have a eight and a half by 11 of this drawing. If I could bring this up, this may help.
Yeah, because I, I can't figure out where the lot lines are. I can't figure out where the setbacks are.
But you see, the, the, one of the main requirements, one of the main reasons we require a deed is for that legal description. A deed only references a plan, and we don't have that plan, it defeats the purpose.
This, this is the lot line of this property.
The dotted line.
This, this heavy, this heavy dashed that line.
The dotted.
This lot next door has an easement for this area.
Okay.
An exclusive easement. And this lot has an exclusive easement here of this lot.
Okay.
So, this is their parking. This is where that easement road comes in, and this is where the parking is of this property.
Okay.
This is the water over here.
This is the setback? So, this is your site?
Neil?
Thank you.
Under the weird thing that this is, which is considered the front yard setback?
Well, they're calling this one 93 feet.
Would I consider the front?
Yeah, what is it?
Their access street.
So, this should be the front?
No, access street.
Where's the access street?
That comes, it's down here. It comes, it comes in on this corner right here.
So, this is the front yard setback? Is that 1.383?
I'm not, I, what, you're not, why don't you look at this one here?
They said this was easier. But I don't think it shows on that one.
There isn't a...
Yeah.
So, where is your access? It's not off Concord?
Comes in, in here.
Off of where? Is that a street?
No, I thought you said it was...
No, it's, it's, it's... Lighter way. That's correct. That, that's exactly what this is. It's coming in here.
Yeah.
This hatched area is this house here.
Right.
This right here is this house.
Right.
So, it comes in from, from the bottom, and it comes in on a...
Comes in over your septic field.
An easement. Right, the parking is right over this.
Neil, if you look at the locust map, there's a parcel of land between the access street and the subject property.
But you know, the problem, it's not, this is the problem, it's not oriented the same way, which makes it...
I guess it is.
No, it's not. 'Cause here's the, here's Atlantic Ocean, and here's Atlantic Ocean up there. I know, but it would make it so much easier if it was like that, you know? Quite frankly. Because it's, it's hard for me to, so, so what you're saying is Lowell Street is the access street?
That's correct. It's off of Lowell, yes.
And this is Lowell down here.
So, let me just add something here.
Okay.
The setbacks are not from the, are not from your frontage, they're from the street, the frontage street. There is no frontage street.
Okay, so how do we deal with that, then?
Why?
No setbacks?
Um, I think it's pre-existing nonconforming situation, like any other landlocked parcel.
It can't be denied access.
And you're also, you're not increasing, it's questionable whether you're increasing the nonconformity or you're testifying.
If I were looking at that, I'd say, um, you know, I mean, it's interesting, you either got three sides and one rear, or four sides.
This doesn't have any. This doesn't have any of anything. There's no setbacks. It's stuck in the corner of the, of the lot.
See, but the problem is, is if I'm reading this again right, it's, to me, it's a little, um, the, the existing house is this line, and the proposed house is that line?
No. Well, I think, I tried to do two plans here. This is the existing house, decks and that cross, and it's over the property line.
But you know, you're not, I, I...
Is the house itself over the property line?
Yes.
And what we're proposing, not by a lot, but we're proposing to move it, instead
of over the property line, move it back 1.83 feet.
Okay. Can you just draw for me with that? Well, I think I tried to do two plans here. This is the existing house, decks and that crosshair, and it's over the property line.
But you know, you're not...
Is the house itself over the property line?
Yes. And what we're proposing, not by a lot, but we're proposing to move it instead of over the property line, move it back one point eight-three feet.
Can you just draw for me with that? I feel like I'm...
What the existing house is?
I want you to just outline the existing house. Okay.
Excuse me, having said that, is this deck covered?
The new deck?
No, is this deck covered?
Yes, yes, the existing one isn't.
You outline the drip edge of the roof.
Okay, so now outline the proposed house, the outlines of the proposed house so I can figure out where you're at. Okay.
Well, there is deck over this, so it would be down here.
You intended a covered deck?
On that part, not out here, but just on that part, same as it was.
Okay.
And the wood deck that's currently on the portion that has an easement for parking, is that coming off?
We would replace it and build it exactly in the same spot.
Does your easement allow for that structure to be on that property?
Yes, it does.
But can we grant permission to build on...
If there is use in building.
Okay, is that...
We need to see that easement.
Yeah, to make sure that...
Could you tell me again, I don't write down very fast, how far over the lot is the house, the existing house?
The southwest corner of that is right on the property line.
Point five-five.
Sarah, if I may, this board has run into problems recently when issuing an opinion which needed to be filed with the land court for improper references. And then it created an issue with the...
We do?
Yes, probably about six months ago, we had an applicant that had to return because the opinion was rejected by the land court and then we got into a discussion over whether or not they lost their special permit and had to reapply. And I argued and I was able to, some of you agreed with me, that it wasn't their fault and it's because the land court's rather particular in what they record and what they don't record.
So we made a new reference to a deed.
This property is registered land. I'm of the opinion that we don't have the information we need... One, we might not have the information we need to properly review this file. I'm almost certain we don't have the information we need to properly issue a ruling and an opinion on this file. I think that at the very least, we need a copy of the land court plan and it's probably pretty likely that we're going to need a copy of the easement document, at least for access, that's going to be referenced on that land court plan.
For what Frank, too, regarding the deck?
Yeah, for a multitude of reasons. But I think we probably need the certificate of title, the land court plan that's referenced in the deed, and any easements that are referenced in either. Any easement is probably more than we need, there could be a multitude of easements. But any easements which relate to access or the use of abutting land for improvements which originate from this property, I think that information's probably vital. And that's aside from, you know, obviously, this plan's a little bit different than...
I'd like to see, I mean, this is quite as typical as we usually see. It took me a little while to figure it out, but it'd be really helpful if you could just set forth what the existing setbacks are for the present property. You know, we've got one that's clearly over the line, and then what the proposed setbacks are going to be, so we can...
Well, that is actually clear.
I eventually figured it out.
One plant has the existing setbacks and the other plant has the proposed setbacks.
Well, what is this one point eight-three here?
That's proposed.
That is the proposed setback.
Is that to a covered deck or an open deck?
A covered deck.
Okay, so it's a porch. It's not really a deck, it's a porch.
Yeah, there's a couple of definitions. If it's covered, if it's a covered porch, that's the drip edge of the property.
People think of porch as, I think of a roof.
Deck can be run all the way to the property line.
I think I get it.
But I have a question that I need to have clarified. Where you're saying the front yard, the front yard setback is ninety-three feet, that's from the Atlantic Ocean. And that's from a point beyond the seawall. So I don't know what I can... I mean, bottom line, there are no reasonable setbacks on this parcel. This property has no legal setbacks whatsoever, can never get close to it as far as I'm concerned. Because of the easement for the swimming pool, I presume that would preclude putting a structure in that easement area. Very little that could happen here, so you're going to have to have some relief from us to do anything.
Yeah.
And so I'm not adverse to doing it, but I think to Anthony's point, we need to know what we're dealing with so we can address it appropriately.
If the land court plan that created the lot has a street on it, whether or not it's public, then I think that much further educates us as to what we're going to define the setbacks as.
Whether it ever existed, whether it exists today.
Is this an area that had Hammurack Beach Road before it got washed into the sea?
Before it got washed into the sea?
Yeah, maybe, it may be.
That's what I'm wondering. It was a beach road.
Hammurack Beach Road ran all along there.
I mean, that road is called Hammurack Beach Road, that's our...
That's your address? Oh, I see.
Yes, Hammurack Beach Road.
It's seaward of the seawall somewhere, I think.
So that's why...
The frontage was actually Hammurack Beach Road at some point.
So that's why they're interpreting that as...
There was no tag then in Hammurack Beach Road, right?
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, it is, technically.
It's just got washed away.
There's just no street there anymore, but again, paper streets, streets that were never built.
We just want to make sure we... But I have to tell you, it was the design of the day. It's a beautiful design, it's going to be very, very lovely, but we want to make sure that it don't cause you any problems. Or problems in the, you know, so... Anthony, is there anything else you think you need?
As far as I can tell, I think that will cover it. But I think we're doing each other a disservice without that information.
Yeah, it's confusing to look at it if you don't know the history of the property.
Yeah, and then especially when land court, we had an applicant not that long ago that had to spend a lot of time and money and even though we were willing to borderline bend over backwards to help them to get over the fact that the land court, if you don't dot one I, they're not going to record your document and the law, assuming we granted you whatever relief you needed, requires you to record that.
The property's recorded and it's titled, so I mean, if you can get the information...
Yes.
Do we continue this?
Right, to March? We're getting pretty heavy. Do you want to continue to April?
Prefer not to.
It's up to you, you know, we'll take it, you'll go on the list and we'll get as much done as we can.
How many do we have for March right now? Four?
This should be number five, I think.
Five.
Including the continuation?
That should be six. The other continuation, yes.
Yeah, Williamsburg.
The other thing I'm concerned about is...
You always cut them off till April, you know?
Yeah, we have to, we have to, so we'll just...
We'll have a look.
I probably want this back, though.
I'm concerned about the plan because it is a septic repair plan and it's got a lot on it that isn't appropriate to what we're doing right now. And I think we're going to be referencing it, whatever plan we are using, we're going to reference in our decision. It would be prudent to have a simplified plan that shows the setbacks, shows the existing, shows the proposed, shows the access, you know, indicates that there's an easement there, all of those things that will help us when the decision is made to reference them and then the land court be happy with the decision.
Mr. Vito is here, he can give you his business plan.
They can just punch it out on the computer, it's easy.
It's on the plan.
All right, so we want to...
But that way the decision can, the plan can represent...
I wouldn't want to reference this plan.
No, but I mean, the future.
All right, so we have a continue.
We move to continue one thirty-five Hammurack Road till the March here.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Do you just have to sign something over there for you?
Keep in mind that it is St. Patrick's Day.
Bring green beer.
There you go, I'll bring the beer.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Sharon?
There's nothing in the bylaws of Situate about having a zoning hearing on St. Patrick's Day?
Most Irish town in the country.
Love to get the shamrock cookies.
If we've ever gone this long without coming to a decision that didn't involve a cell tower.
Oh, and you know what else is on there? The increase, you need to have the percentage of increase from the existing to the proposed.
Yeah, I think that's part of the, we'll make sure that we redo it.
Yeah, I think you have the square footage, but we put a percentage to it.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. God, is that...
You're in trouble, is that our second continuation?
Only the second one we've touched.
All right, so thirty-nine Otis Road.
Neil, this was yours from that file, from that one that you brought to me? It was the legal description from the assessor?
Yeah, I think so.
It's more than the lot. This legal description has frontage on one of the streets, that lot didn't.
So it's not that, it's...
Now, this legal description, it might include it, but it's more than...
Yeah, I know, the design of the description, yeah.
Do you need it back?
I don't know. No, yeah, somebody got it, got it. I'm trying to check.
We haven't got anything done, seriously? Everything's been continued, we've got nothing done.
People are going to think we get paid by the...
I think you got a lot done.
Do you?
I accomplished a lot, yes.
I'm going to go ponder that later. It doesn't feel like it.
We have a, all right, I'll address it when we get to it.
Paul Sheeran of forty-eight Ocean Avenue in Situate requests a special permit finding pursuant to sections of the zoning bylaw, section four seventy-point-six F, for substantial improvement of an existing structure located in the town of Situate Floodplain and Watershed District, which we believe existed prior to March second nineteen ninety-two, with section eight, ten, or two A for the raising and reconstruction of the single-family dwelling with a greater than twenty percent increase in the gross floor area at thirty-nine Otis Road in Situate. Assessor's map, forty block five, twenty.
There's Paul Mere, here, the office, there is a claim, I presume the applicant for this project, Paul Sheeran. Mr. Sheeran has reached a sales agreement to purchase the property thirty-nine Otis Road. The size of the lot is eleven thousand three hundred and seventy-seven square feet. The proposal is to raise the existing dwelling, which is shown in this plan in this location, which is brown, and reconstruct the new dwelling, shown in yellow plan. The existing matters and formities are the front yard setback is twenty-two feet and a side yard setback in the vicinity here of at...
Six point five.
Twelve feet.
Can we hear a little better?
We can't really hear him.
We can't hear him?
You can move up, too.
Oh, sure. Sit at the table if you want, we can see it better. This is the existing house in brown, and the proposed house would be, as shown here, which would be considered a more or less than the existing lot. The locust lies in two flood zones, one is the town of Situate Floodplain and Watershed Protection District. The lot is below elevation ten and we're asking for a special permit for a substantial improvement in that district, which is a substantial improvement is defined as anything that's more than twenty-five percent larger than the existing house. We're also asking for a special permit to be allowed to construct a new dwelling that would be more than twenty percent larger than the existing gross floor area of the existing house. We're asking for an increase of one hundred fifty-five point three percent. The house was listed in nineteen fifteen. The current firm map has it in a flood zone of ten, but the map from November of last year puts it at elevation sixteen. The proposed elevation of the foundation in the first floor would be complied with November two thousand fifteen, which is six feet higher than the map that's currently in effect, the current map being July of two thousand twelve. That's the legal map that's in effect right now from the proposed map from November last year, places it at elevation sixteen. So the house and the crossface and everything is designed according to what we anticipate and show.
I didn't hear that last part.
Pardon?
I didn't hear the last part of what you said.
Oh, the FEMA map in two thousand fifteen is six feet higher than the existing flood zone map of two thousand and twelve.
Okay, and is that passed? That's two thousand, okay.
No.
No.
The two thousand fifteen?
Right.
No, it's still pending. But we advise everybody to go to it because if it's approved, you don't want to build a brand-new house below base flood elevation.
Insurance is going to...
Yeah, they will, they will get you.
Okay, so you're building it to comply, you'll be building it to comply with the map that has not been approved?
That's correct.
Okay.
In my application, there's a narrative where I provided a zoning chart cable.
Thank you.
And what we're asking is that the front yard setback right now is twenty-two feet and we're proposing to push it back to twenty-two point five feet. The side yard setbacks would be conforming at twelve feet and twenty-one feet. The rear yard setback is eight feet and will, the proposed is, the existing is six and a half and the proposed would be fourteen and a half feet. So the only relic we're asking is to maintain the front yard setbacks, that's unless not conforming to what currently exists. I'd also list the analysis of a special permit, we call it a special permit criteria, or apply for special permit, there's five criteria, I can read those if you'd like to, if you'd like to change.
Can you go back to the, I'm a little bit confused on the front yard setback. The existing is twenty-two?
No.
Yep.
Proposed is twenty-two point five.
This is the existing.
Okay, got it, got it, okay. Put it back.
Applewood.
And the lot width, I think you just typed it there. Is that, it's still, it's not changed, the lot width, has it? Yeah, the lot width, you've got one...
It's through the house.
Yeah, you just added typo, I just wanted to make sure.
No, I think it's through the house.
Okay. When I say lot width, this is lot width through the building.
Oh, okay, okay.
The required is a hundred feet, right now it's a hundred thirty-five point nine, I'll increase to a hundred forty-five point nine.
The existing structure, the existing structure is sort of the back on the lot, so it comes into this taper.
Got it. Okay, okay, makes sense. All right.
Paul, can you address the question of the hundred-foot buffer? Here, the existing structure is completely outside the hundred-foot buffer and you're proposing to build half in the hundred-foot buffer?
Well, there's two zones you're under the weapons protection, there is a hundred-foot buffer from the frag mines across the street, this is a hundred-foot buffer zone, and you're right, this house is outside of it, but if you look at the flood zone, the land center of coastal storage, the existing house is in it because the contour is tight, this is the land control around the house, so the existing house is in the land center of coastal storage, which is a resource area, but there are open spaces for, what they usually require is that any structures being built would be at or above the elevation shown on the FEMA flood map, that's where we're putting the proposed house, the elevation shown on the two thousand fifteen map.
Well, that makes sense for the structure, but is this a conservation issue because of the...
Yes.
You have been or you shall be?
Pardon?
You have been or you shall be?
I was there last evening.
And they had no problem with it being structured, or they're taking it under advisement?
No, I had to go back, they want me to address some issues with the stormwater and the grading around the house, but we don't see any issues with that. It's a matter of sitting down with the agent, explaining the plan to them.
I'm just, it's a question of the cart before the horse is my only concern, I don't want to approve something that they're going to say that can't happen, I mean, the buffer is concerning me.
The things you're addressing are, it's really apples and oranges, what you're improving and what they were doing.
Well, I understand, but they throw it back at us and the whole fruit basket comes back in our face, or in your face, I should say.
Yeah, no, our face, I think. Okay. Four seventy-point-six, that's what I wanted to ask you. So, how did we get to four seventy-point-six? Because you're in the, you said you're in the watershed and floodplain?
We're in Situate Floodplain and Watershed Protection District.
You are.
That's under, yeah.
Four seventy.
Four seventy, ten, six?
Yes, so, yes, so what I'd like you to do is explain to me how this is going to comply with four seventy-point-six F. And, because it's, I guess it's a, would you agree it was a substantial, I mean, when you knock something down, is it a substantial improvement of an existing structure?
No. A substantial improvement in the zoning bylaw is defined as an increase of twenty-five percent or more of the structure. So when you look at the existing structure here in brown and compare it to this one, the proposed structure is more than twenty-five percent larger than the existing structure.
Right.
And so by definition, that's a substantial improvement.
Of an existing structure.
Yes. In the floodplain and watershed protection district, and in order to make it larger than twenty-five percent, the zoning board has to issue a special permit in order for that, in order for that to happen. Now, in order for the board to allow it, there's a criteria that you have to address and I point that out in my narrative, and the thresholds are that the proposed improvements, what I'm saying is the proposed improvements will be consistent with the applicable requirements of the National Flood Safety Program, as well as requirements in the State Building Code pertaining to flood-resistant construction. If you look at the zoning bylaw under section four seventy-point-six, it says if you want to have a substantial improvement, then your new building has to comply with the FEMA Construction requirements and the State Building Code, which equally does. In this case, it actually exceeds those two codes because we're going with the two thousand fifteen map. Also, the other criteria is that we can alter a water course, it says where, my response to that is that where there's no water course, I don't hear the locusts, this requirement is not applicable to this specific site. This area here where the frag mines are, this is the ball field that you see?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
This is turning around coming around the sites here, the ball field's right in this corner here, you know, this whole area floods from Tenth Avenue down to Jericho Road in the big ocean storms.
Right. Right.
So it's oceanfront?
It's what?
It's oceanfront property.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I know what I was missing too. I think I was missing, do we have something in there?
No.
Does he own it, or does, has he got a purchase and sale?
Purchase and sale, yeah.
Okay, is that in the pocket, is that in the?
He's got a purchase and sales agreement.
But do we have a copy of that, Annie?
No. The purchase and sales agreement?
We should have one, you can redact any of the, the purchase price, things like that, but-
I was, I was with the owners of the property last evening, and they're anticipating the sale would go forth on the 29th, and I told them they'd have to wait for some of the bill carries to be up if it's subject to a building from that.
Yeah, well, we need something in writing from them.
All right.
Or a copy of the purchase and sale agreement to show that Mr. Sharon has their blessing to go forward with this. Gentlemen, any questions to the right? Comments?
I think from a setback situation, it's not an issue, I think the conservation issue is not on our plate, but obviously one that needs to be resolved before a permit could be issued. And I think that the, the existing structure is ready to have significant improvements done, done to it, so relocating it is appropriate. It's consistent with what we do in this, in these neighborhoods. And as I'm looking, is that the plan of the property, the proposed structure?
This is the architect's plan.
So, and looking at the picture of the-
Looking at the street, you see the garage on the right side, and from here over to the house, the second floor.
And if you look at the, I'm familiar with the, with the area, but if you look at the pictures presented, there's a structure behind it that's of a similar elevation, you know, it's not inconsistent with the neighborhood, although it's a neighborhood of increasing size.
It is indeed. An odd little lot.
This is the one I'm thinking of here.
Yeah.
Pushed back to 1915.
That's big, that's, that's an old one, that's big. But, and then there's one over here that's not too big. Great place to watch the ballgame, right?
Questions?
No.
No, I think so, my, it's in the, the year it was built, 1953, so, yes, this is information.
Neil, do you have any questions?
I just have, do you know if that property has the same flood damage damage?
I don't know.
Do you have a crawlspace or anything?
Do you have pictures in here? I don't know. Talking about, you talking-
I was just going to make a comment.
Is that the existing house?
Elevated to be higher than required.
Looks like this was, this was the house.
It's higher than required?
Higher than required under the current flood map.
Yeah.
To get it, you know, get it off of our flood goals, flood damage goals.
And that's a good thing?
I think it's a good thing.
All right. Do we have any, no more questions?
Comments from the audience?
Huh?
Audience?
Oh, I'm sorry, has anyone in the audience wished to be heard on this? Yes, ma'am?
Jackie Bujow, and this is my husband Chuck Welch, and we're the 37 Otis Road of Butters.
Which, in which direction are you of Butters?
On the south side, south, maybe west here.
37, you are?
Yes.
Okay, so you're directly there?
Behind it.
Seaview.
Yep.
So this is going to be moved quite a bit away from your current house?
Yes.
Okay, is that a good-
That's what it looks like.
Yes, it is, yeah.
Yeah.
It's going to be from here over.
Yeah, that's fine, it, we were wondering what the square footage of it is going to be, the finished square footage, looks like it's going to be over 3,000 square feet.
Not according to, the information we have says 2390.
Oh.
The existing is 936, proposed is 239, 2,390, 155%.
Looks a lot bigger than that.
It does.
The second floor on, you know, this house will have the second floor-
Yeah.
-over the garage, as well as the central part of the house.
Mm-hmm.
That, that's where the majority of the increases come in. It is longer than the existing house-
Uh-huh.
-but by adding the second floor, that's where most of the increases come in.
Okay.
And the existing house doesn't have a garage, right?
No.
So that's really what you're seeing on the, on the left end, that's all garage, the driveway pulls into the garage.
This is garage, here, here is garage, this is the house, they do have a room in all directions as well. But what he did was to center it in the lawn, as opposed to keeping it where it is, you know, over this side here.
Right. And then you were talking about grading the, the lot, how will that affect our house and the houses around, where will the water go?
Okay, well, right now, the slope of the land is going from here down toward the street. There's some catch spaces in the street, there's three of them, one, two, and three, and this, this is graded, so drainage pattern will stay the same, it will open the lawn out to the street.
We can-
Send water to abiding properties, it's illegal, so, and this issue came up last night with the Conservation Commission, and we showed them was, that the proposed grading around the house is such that the water will still go out to the street, it isn't going to go this way or this way because they have to go uphill, you can't send it to the abiding properties. What they're planning on doing is, we show a lot of plants around the perimeter here for shrubs, as well as this side here.
Yeah, there's an existing hedge that's actually on our property back there.
Yeah, they'll, they'll probably know.
She said, I thought she said it was on your property?
Yeah.
Yeah, Paul, that's not a good thing to say, then.
Is actually on our-
No, no, we're saying-
Yeah, but it's not theirs.
She says it's theirs.
If that root system's on this lot, what they do is take it out and re-plant it, the shrub there.
She doesn't think it's her hedge.
Oh, I thought you said it was her hedge.
Their hedge, but it's on their property.
Yeah.
No, it is your hedge.
That is their hedge.
It's technically your hedge, you can take it down.
Your hedge.
I think it's yours.
I think it's yours, too.
Would you like it removed?
That'd be nice.
They'll do that.
That's what we're proposing.
It's your talk.
And then there's some structure in the back corner, we don't know what this is.
Fireplace, the outside fireplace.
It says-
It's a stone fireplace?
No, no, it's not that, there was something, something proposed roof runoff recharge system, and it shows a square.
These four trees here, this is something that will be set down in the ground, these infiltrators, it's part of the stormwater.
So any water from the roof area will not run to the other property, so they either discharge into the stormwater drains that they're putting underground that way, so again, to eliminate runoff or run towards the street.
And where's that wa, that water will go out towards the street, that's in the back here?
Yeah, the water in the back will be contained in that area to be able, and then absorb into, absorb into the ground and up.
Into the street.
It will percolate down. You're not proposing, you're not proposing to drain those water on us to the street, you're proposing to, those are collection basins, what, à la French drain type thing?
Subsurface chamber?
Yep.
Similar to a, like a leaching area for a septic system?
Okay.
Everything's below the lawn, so you won't see them.
No, it's not that we'll see them, it's, if water's going down into the ground there, where's it going from there?
Well, no-
You're saying it's-
No, what those will do is to absorb the water.
Uh-huh.
If you get a real big storm, what will happen is the water, that, the water coming into the chambers coming from the downspouts-
Mm-hmm.
-and at the house, there'll, there'll be like an overflow valve, if those chambers were to fill up with water-
Mm-hmm.
-in a real big storm, the water would come out at the relief valve at the house, and flow out to the street.
And that's just a crawl space.
And that's just a crawl space, he doesn't have a basement there. And the reason for that is because if you have anything other than a crawl space, then the insurance rates are going to go way up, the FEMA flood rates.
You wouldn't get a permit for it, you wouldn't get a building permit for it, it would be unlawful.
Indoor, indoor swimming pool, right?
Okay. Any other questions?
Steve, I just wanted to let Neil know-
Could you just state your name for the record, and your address?
Just kidding.
I didn't, oh, I didn't hear the last name.
Just Neil had two questions, one was, was there a full basement, there is a full basement in the house now.
Okay.
And the house did take damage, the end, the foundation wall was caved in in the last storm.
I think where the rooftop is on the picture.
I know the house, we want to look at it.
Yeah.
This is, this is the house we want to get out of the bottom line.
I'm sure you're happy to have it improved upon in the neighborhood. Any other questions or comments on the, on that property? No? Okay. Um, we have a motion?
Is there a, Chuck Welch from 37 Otis Road?
Yes.
And they were saying it drains and erodes, the manholes, we had those checked, because usually they're filled up with water.
I have, I have no idea.
That would be a Department of Public Works.
Filled up with water because of the clutter because of the tide.
They don't usually go out, the water usually sits in them pretty good.
These, you know, very, these things need to be cleaned from the back to back, just called checking the DPW.
Okay.
It might very well be on those, certain public papers, yeah.
You're about to lose your papers.
Sorry. I don't want to lose my valentine. Okay, do we have a motion?
Kyle would be very happy.
Thank you. Okay.
Do you want me to do it?
Grant, get the log down. I'm going to look at it.
I move to grant, the special permit pursuant to section 470, 6F, for substantial improvement to an existing structure located on the town's floodplain watershed. I have to do 810.
I think you've got to make a gale finding.
Have to do a gale.
Yeah.
And that it is, there is a, does represent a substantial improvement.
You have to identify the-
Nonconforming.
Identify the nonconformities.
It's nonconforming with respect to front yard setback, and that's it.
Left side yard setback.
Currently, the left side yard setback, the proposed structure will alleviate the left side yard and improve the setback conformity of the front yard.
No increase in-
Why'd you do it, Frank?
And no increase in any existing nonconformities, and no additional nonconformities, and therefore a special permit granted. Sound that a joint motion?
Great.
Oh, that's cool. On paper?
Aye.
Aye. Wait, you're welcome. Thank you. Sorry, we have, sorry, you had to wait too long.
I didn't notice.
You didn't have to.
I don't think we were talking.
Who's turn?
Pick one up. I think it's probably my turn, I've been, I've been MIA for two meetings.
Oh, I don't know, then you get two tonight.
There you go. We're going to get two.
Anthony gets this one, now, this is an easier one, you'll have that down.
Well, I'm trying to ask Mr. Maribito if he's writing one, because we had, we had one situation where we had two written, and we don't want that. I want to avoid that. Sorry, John.
See, Anthony's going to write this.
There you go. Sure.
Should I pick it up tomorrow, or?
I'm going to need it until Saturday midday, yeah.
Well, there was a, Paul did represent that there was a tight timeframe on this that they're looking to pass soon, so if he can get it turned around in a day, that's to his advantage.
You gotta, you gotta dig that basement, right, before the ground freezes.
It's only 10:15, he got till midnight.
Yeah, that's true.
No, it don't.
All right.
Where's someone in the business?
All right, Mr. Maribito, big eight. We've got to move. I mean that with all sincerity.
Let's see the next example.
Are you on the ne, are you on the next one?
I'm on the next one. Seriously, you're on? You're left.
Are you coming?
Murphy.
You're, you're on the next one?
Yeah.
Okay, move. Where we go, we, I'm glad we can get you all in at 91 Homarock Beach Road, we're not on, we're not on taping.
Yeah, we'll back on.
Are we back on?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, no, I got it all fixed up in Homatown, right, too, so you can hear it.
Oh, great, great. That's right, tell people.
Why don't you let people know?
Sorry. We usually, I'm usually much nicer.
I think-
Especially Mr. Maribito.
Yep.
I hear, I thought you-
Did we come back on before the end of the Rod and Gun Club?
Yeah.
So there was a portion of that, but it was a very long meeting, and we apologize for the technical interruption, but the substantive component happened before the meeting, before the technical interruption, and people saw the end, so.
Yep. Okay. Hello, Mr. Maribito, nice to see you again.
Where you been?
Are you, do you have 91 Homarock Beach Road? Please.
Jacqueline Murphy of 91 Homarock Beach Road in Situate requests mass general law chapter 48, section 6, special permit signed to the area of the city of Homatown, then we have more than two, and this is a, and 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 a, and
Okay, well, how, all right, 23 feet above sea level, but how many feet above the beach there?
Right here, this is 15 feet.
Above the beach?
See that 15?
Oh, that's 15.
Right, so it's.
Seven feet in the air.
Exactly, above the.
Okay.
To the bottom of the.
I was going to.
So the bottom of the pile will be six feet above that, the 21. Maybe about two feet of grainy in the first floor. When you're on the barrier beach, the top of the pile has to be at least two feet above the finished grade as well. If we were to hold elevation 16 at the top of the pile, we weren't making, the piles have to come up anyway because you're on the barrier beach. So I suspect that that number will change on the 2015 map. Now, if it doesn't, we're still going to build it up at the elevations I just talked about.
It's 17 feet back here. The rear of the lot is, it's 17 feet is the grade, so.
Which is about a foot and a half higher than the top of the seawall. There isn't much of the seawall exposed here. If you look at the elevation in front of it, it's 15 and 14, which means when these waves come in, and the beach is pretty flat, when the waves come in, they're going to come right in and go right underneath that house. So you want it to help us out. That's why we're putting it higher than what's required. With this house, they also have a de-investment. In fact, there's a big parking lot, which obviously do use for this existing dwelling. These passageways are not passable. This is all standing here. What they do is to come up on postscript lane, they pull into here, and there's a walkway that goes right into the existing house. What I'm showing the plan is the existing structure is outlined in the purple, the green here. There's a, there's a structure with that as well. And what they're proposing to do is to, these, these areas in green are, have a roof over them at the present time. The area that's just shaved in pink, this is an open deck. There's open decks here, there's an open deck here as well. There's an open deck up to the seawall. The area outlined in orange is the proposed structure. There'll also be an open deck on the front of the house as well. That's outlined in purple.
Is the open deck in the velocity zone, the VE?
Yes, it is. The setbacks of the existing house on the north side was 3.3 feet, and we're proposing to pull that into 3.6 feet. On the southerly side, the side yard setback right now is 7.9. We're proposing to pull in the entire house to 8.4 feet. The rear yard setback is at 16.1. We're proposing to maintain that, but don't change. The front yard setback, if you will, and we're measuring from the Vander Street. At the present time, it's 48.7. We're going to push that back to 56.8. The reason for that is that pushing back beyond this pink line, which is the velocity zone. The proposed increase in the square foot in the gross floor area is like 183%. The gross floor area of the entire house would complete would be 3,475 square feet. We're also asking to, this, this setback here, again, would, would be made less nonconforming by going from 3.3 to 3.6 feet. The setback on this side would be at 8.4 feet. Eight feet is what's required. Part of that reason is if you look at the plan, there's an existing open deck on the money property, which is just about on the property line, so they're giving themselves some separation there. This here is the temporary passageway that goes off to the beach.
How come you don't just, over on the north side? Yeah, exactly. Why don't you just, I mean, you made it straight lines the other three sides. Why don't you just pull it back?
On this side here?
No, the other, up, up, up.
Yeah, up here.
Right.
Can we bring, bring this all the way down?
Yeah.
I don't know, the architect put a jog in here for some reason. That's about a, that's about a two foot jog, a two or three foot jog here. I don't know, is there reason for that?
Would it be putting some, like, there's existing air conditioning on the site, will it be putting that in that area possibly?
Probably.
Do you have drawings of the house?
For what?
Drawings of the house proposal?
Yes.
What's that measurement, 3.6 feet?
Yeah, 3.5.
I need the jog to fit it in there, right?
Yeah, just.
Is that that side, the second drawing? Is that the side that cuts, cuts out, cuts in?
Second from the top.
This is the rear, the two sides. This is the, this is what you're looking at in the ocean.
Yeah.
This is what you can see from coming in from postscript lane. This side here, this looks like.
That's what it said, I guess.
The side we're talking about. This would be the right side. This would be the left side you're looking at, and this is the right side.
I suppose it's better than looking at a, that's huge, I think. I mean, I don't think it's a terribly inspired design, but. It's better than having, I guess, really, it's better than having another flat surface there.
I'm not the architect.
I know you would, you wouldn't design it like that, Paul. It'll be, obviously, it'll be an improvement, safety and everything else otherwise, so.
Right now, I mean, this house is virtually sitting down around.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
I mean, I mean, you know, when the waves come in.
They're coming in through the slider.
Yeah.
Well, they're near 100 years.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, anybody in the audience wish to be heard? There's three of you I'm looking for, if you count your son. Okay, any, no other questions for anybody? Do we have a motion?
You don't want to say one?
I'm coming, I'm thinking.
What's the gale?
This is a, what was the floodplain that came in?
I think it's a gale.
470 F. 477 F.
470.6F.
Good, that's great.
No, the last one.
No?
Yeah, this isn't enough for plane. That's the last one.
Straight gale.
Yeah, straight gale.
Straight gale?
Yeah.
I did look this one up a little bit, you know, this is split in, in, in the courts about whether this is considered an intensification because of the increase in size in the lot area. So in an exercise of caution, my motion, just to give you guys a heads up of where I'm coming from, I think we should make a finding as to whether it's a substantial detriment to the neighborhood or not, just in case. Okay? On the application to raise and reconstruct the structure at 91 Homarock Beach Road, I move that the board find that the existing property is nonconforming with respect to lot area, lot width, frontage, and setbacks on both sides of the house. That the proposed new structure will bring the setback of seven, the nonconforming setback of 7.9 feet will be reduced, and, and so it will be setback 8.4 feet on the one side, and then the nonconforming setback on the other side of 3.3 will be reduced to 3.6. Further move to find that the proposed structure will, increasing the gross floor area of eight, 183% will be an intensification of the, or may be an intensification of the lot area nonconformity, and that the board find that the proposed construction is not a substantial detriment to the neighborhood compared to the pre, compared to the existing structure, and that the criteria under section 950.3A through E are all satisfied, and that the board command a special permit.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Paul.
Sure?
Leave the house, please.
I'll take that one, too.
Barbara's probably saying, where the heck?
Sure?
Yeah.
You went at Situate zoning for three, three and a half hours.
Just got to use the mandarin. We're going to try to do the last one.
Yeah, I think so.
Oh, yes.
Ah, no, it's a mandarin. I think I'm stuck here for another minute.
Wish we could design. All right, so.
Anyone needs to move up closer to get a better view?
All right, next we have 105 Hathley Road. Last one, Annie. Oh, we can't wait, 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 we have to wait.
Yeah, these are way back.
Just want to change some diapers.
This one's going to be an old one.
Are they old enough for them?
I thought you were making a suggestion at his age.
He's the young guy.
You sure you might do this?
Sure.
Okay.
Where is 105 Hathley Road?
And then there was one.
These are Paul's plans, too.
Yeah, he just charged me to stick around anyway, so I don't, I don't think I need him.
Am I? Last one? I'll take that one.
You want?
Yeah.
You're looking ahead.
Yeah.
I was looking down the road.
No, that's enough for all of us next month. There's already four.
I think I'm being set up.
I'm going to pay somebody to do the next one.
I turned the last one around quickly.
Yeah, no, 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 it's just the next one's going to be difficult to do. Okay.
Diamond Development, P O Box 1480. Inductored, request special permit finding under section 6-10.2B of the Situate zoning bylaws. Construct a single-family dwelling on a lot with 50 feet of frontage at 105 Hathley Road in Situate assessor's map 9 block 6, carsel 17.
Okay. Mr. Bjorkland. Is that all we have? We must have more than one piece of paper. Do you own this property now?
I do not presently own the property, but there should be a, a purchase and sales agreement in, with the application.
Okay.
And if for some reason you can't find it, the owner is actually behind me.
Okay. So, do we have a PNS back there? I don't, how come I don't have anything?
Oh, I haven't.
I don't have a.
I just have the one page.
Yeah.
You've got a plan and an application.
Right, we need the, we need. We need the assessor's map. You've been through this rodeo. Do we have an assessor's map?
It should be in there. The assessor's map.
That was the.
The card, the property information.
Assessor's card.
So we're grading a lot.
That should all be in there.
Thank you. Okay, where's that? Oh. Okay, all right, so what we do is have a subdivision plan. And we have that. And we have the assessor's card here. It says this was built in 1910.
But they're taking the house down.
Huh?
Taking the house down.
Yeah, and.
They're building, creating a 50-foot frontage lot. This isn't, this doesn't really matter. It's not pre-existing nonconforming, but I'm looking at 48, section six, looking at just a 50-foot frontage lot.
We've got a purchase and sale agreement.
Does he own it? And is, is the plan okay?
Right.
Yeah.
How are you going to access lot two?
Uh, it, well, do you want me to start the, once you have everything, I'll.
Sure.
I'm pretty sure everything is in the package.
Yeah, it's, it is. I'm sorry, we just somehow we. Okay, so. Very good. All right, so I'll pass it this way. Neil, are you having problems?
Neil's chair quit at 10:30.
Chair's getting, chair's getting tired, huh?
Yeah, Neil, here's the.
Look at that!
I got the chair instructions right here.
That's Mike Lawrence's chair, isn't it? Yeah, it's good.
Sounds like Donald Trump.
Welcome back.
Okay. What would you like to do here?
Okay, for, for the record, Steve Bjorkland, 38 Lads Way, and I'm a partner at Diamond Development. We have a current purchase and sales agreement to purchase the property, known as 105 Hathley Road. And what we're looking to do is to create a 50-foot frontage lot under 610-2B, which requires us to have 20,000, at least 20,000 square feet, it's in 10,000 square foot zone. And we're requesting a special permit to allow the construction of a single-family dwelling. And presently on the site, there is an existing older home, which is going to be removed, and the plan reflects that the home will be removed. And obviously, as you look at the entire plan, there's about 3.2 acres of property that's included in, in the overall purchase and sales agreement. We are going to be going to the planning board for a 610-2D, which is a residential compound development for the remainder of the property. And the access to the property vis a vis a common driveway, which will be approved by the planning board under a special permit, will provide the access to the entire site. And there's presently an existing driveway that goes in. We're basically going to widen out the existing driveway.
So the common driveway will be on lot one?
On the 50-foot special permit lot, yes.
And so you won't be touching the wetlands?
We're trying to do it without touching any of the wetlands at all, and as long as the fire chief works with us, we believe we can put in an 18-foot access drive instead of a 20-foot access drive. And he's indicated if we add a fire hydrant for the town that he'd be amenable to that.
So you want a 610.2D. Six pack, 10.2D. Residential compound.
Yeah, we're, we're only here for the 50-foot, which is 610-2B.
That's planning board.
Not for the drive.
Yeah, I'm glad it's not us.
The rules for the 50-foot frontage, it has to have twice the zone, land, the zone in this area is 10,000 feet?
Yes.
So you have 20,000, 23,409.
Yes.
It's all upland, certified upland?
There's a little tiny piece of wetland at the front of it, but it's, that's why it's got 23,000, so we've got in excess of 20,000 feet of.
That's just the only wetland, it's a corner of the street.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, it, the typical arguments are whether you can create a, you know, a 50-foot frontage lot with an existing house on it, but they're going to take all the houses down. There's no, it's as if it's an undeveloped property. It's straightforward to 50-foot frontage plan.
Yeah, nothing's going to happen with this until the remainder of it is approved anyways. anyways, so.
And we need to have on the plan that we will, it shall not be further subdivided. Do we have that?
I don't know if we've got that note on the plan, but what happens is, the plan that's recorded, that the registry is going to be a land court plan, so we certainly can put that note on the land court plan itself. So after we go through the process once, then they have to prepare a whole new set of plans because it's land court.
Right, but...
So, but it certainly could be in the decision that it's there and...
Typically, on a fifty-foot frontage, they have that in the decision, let it just not be further divided.
Yeah.
According to Mr. Arkand, it's not subdivided, it's divided. Although I think the bylaw says subdivided.
Right, yeah.
Have you further subdivided?
While the Arkand always argued it should say cannot be further divided.
Right.
Oh.
But the bylaw actually stipulates subdivided.
Subdivided, yeah.
I'm just harking back to the old days.
Yeah, you're getting a little slap happy, is what you're doing.
And I do have a copy, I don't know if you need this for the file or not.
Because you could, you could...
It's supposed to be so you can't create additional building lots by taking the lot and making it smaller for some reason.
He was...
I do have a copy of the planning board action. I don't know if you want it for the file or not, but it's just the endorsement of the Form A lot, so I'd be glad to give that to her.
Sure.
And I just, I just received that, that's why it wasn't in the application. And I'd love not to be back in March.
Why would you have to be back in March?
I thought you liked coming to see us.
Well, I'll come in for something else, maybe.
I think we put it on for April.
Yeah.
I think we're into June.
All right, Steve, what's the, what's the, what's the citation to the fifty-foot?
Six ten two...
Six ten two B. One, two, three, and four.
Eighty-five.
Eighty-six.
Just out of curiosity, not that it affects our decision, but if you do a common driveway, you can only get two more houses back there, am I right?
Well, that's, that'll be a planning board issue. I believe...
Or perhaps Superior Court.
Well, I believe we actually can get three.
I thought you kind of only have more than...
Unless it's a residential compound development.
Yeah, it's not actually, what do they call it?
It's a private access drive constructed under the requirements of a common driveway.
It's not a common driveway.
It's...
It is a common driveway.
It's, it's, the way, the way the bylaw refers to it is a private access drive constructed in accordance with the common driveway bylaw, for the construction standards. So it's treated a little differently when there's a residential compound and development involved.
Do you have to sell it to the same family?
No, but there has to be homeowners association and all that, so it's, it's only been used once in town, and that was at the Arrowood project, as far as I know. I don't think anyone else has ever come in.
The idea is not to have to put in a street and...
Right. What happens under that is you have to have four times the area required for each lot, so it's not, it's not used commonly because you chew up so much land area to have it, but you can reduce the frontage to a hundred feet for all of the lots.
You don't have a hundred feet, you only have fifty?
No, this is, this is next to it.
So the remaining lot that we're not talking about today, it's got a hundred and eighty point nine to, a hundred and eighty-nine point eight two.
Yeah, so we've got...
Well, Steve, if there's anyone who could do it, you would think about it. I know you spend, this is what Steve does at night when he goes to bed. Let me get these bylaws out.
I don't go to bed. No, it's, it's actually a very minor use of the property compared to putting in a subdivision road and putting seven or eight houses in there, so ultimately we're hoping to get four.
Lot less expensive than to do all of that, so.
Absolutely.
So the return on investment's delightful.
It's a quicker project.
Town sewer there?
There is town sewer available. The existing home is tied into town sewer, and there's an eight-inch sewer main, which was known as the Kenneth Road Extension Sewer Main, and it went up to the edge of the property. And on the old land court plans, Kenneth Road used to go all the way through, and that was wiped out in land court years and years ago. So we will be going to the Board of Selectmen to see if we can tie the three new homes into a sewer extension, which would be about three hundred feet into the property. So it would come right up the common driveway. As well as when we do the common driveway, there's going to be a water main with a hydrant halfway up the driveway, which the fire chief would like to have.
Okay, any, any comments from the audience?
They're ready to go home.
I think so. I'm not sure they're awake. Anthony?
No.
Nope.
John?
Good.
Ed?
Hmm.
Okay, we have a motion?
Move to grant the special permit application under six ten point two B to construct, to divide a fifty-foot, to allow the construction on a fifty-foot frontage lot according to the plan dated January fourteenth, two thousand sixteen by Ross Engineering and or revisions, and with the condition that the plan, the final plan reflect that the property shall not be further subdivided.
Second.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Do we need a, also a purchase or sales?
It's in there, it's in there.
Okay.
It's in there.
Mike writing that one?
That's it.
Like Sarah said, it's not a, not my first rodeo, so I'm glad you had everything. We can't, I can't have Mr. Hayes do a proposed decision, so if any one of you wants to say you're going to write it, we'll hand it to you.
I'll be happy to write it.
Yeah, there you go. What house number, are you going to maintain the one oh five house number?
That I'm not sure of. We're going to have to talk to DPW because there's not enough numbers between one oh five and one oh nine, so we may actually call the private access drive a different name, so that it's easier for the fire department. And that would be the only reason, it's just the fire...
Bjorkland Circle or something?
Yeah.
Pipe's place.
Brady Lane or something, who knows? But it'd be, it'll probably have, probably have some type of a different name on it.
Makes sense.
There you go.
He wrote it a one oh five A, one oh five B.
Put it in the PNS.
Yes.
Put it in the PNS and bind it to it.
Whatever DPW and the fire department would like.
Make him pay for it. Ed, are you on this?
I think he said...
Oh, he's going to write it. I'd be happy to with the applicant offer to write it, so he would probably turn around quicker.
Probably have it ready by Saturday.
There you go.
That'd be me.
Do you have copies of these?
Steve, you have?
I'm all set with...
You have a one hour and twelve minutes.
If I could get Mr. Hayes, we're not off the record. Mr. Hayes is going in for an operation.
No, we're on the record. We're still on...
We're still on.
HIPAA regulations.
Oh, no, Annie, all right, all right, all right. Annie wants her minutes. I know it's late, but...
I move to approve the minutes of November...
December and January.
I'm curious though, Steve.
Make it all at once? Okay, all three. November, December of two thousand fifteen, January two thousand sixteen.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nice job, Annie.
Thank you.
Move to adjourn?
All in favor?
Have you voted on the extension? You could do that earlier.
What extension?
The continuance on the...
Continuance.
We did vote on all the continuances. We did it the first thing.
We did that first, yes.
Bargazan and Apria.
We did that about three and a half hours ago.
Yeah, you forgot about it, Neil.
The House District suggested on the extension that we put it into April.
That's what I wanted to do, but Bargazan, but Bargazan, we could, I wanted to put...
Only because that's going to be controversial, and we've got so many on it.
The gun club, do you mean?
We've already, we've already ruled on it. I don't know...
The final vote?
Yeah, it really was. Unless we want the motion to, Neil was, I had suggested in the first, I mean, now we've got March for Rod and Gun Club, and Neil was just suggesting maybe Bargazan was going to be controversial, we should move to April, too.
I think we've already...
That's what I think we did, too. We already ruled on it for March, but...
Well, it's within the meeting. We can, we can move to reopen it, to reconsider.
Can we move to reopen it?
I think if the letter asks for March, give...
Yeah, that's what...
Well, we don't have to grant it.
Yeah, yeah, I was going to say you don't have to grant it. It might get complicated because then you're going to have to sign a different letter, right? Extension of the time period. I just thought of, I was going to ask you that was the other question. I didn't see the letter, didn't let it...
We can let him know that we want to take another motion.
I think that would be the thing to do is request, because it's going to be such a busy meeting, request the applicant consider a real...
Did they do a lot?
Adjustment to April.
Can I see it?
I think, I think that it came from the right of motion, they say March.
Yes, it did say.
Well, you know, we might just get too much on for, you know, if it's too late, we might have to move it anyway, so.
Yeah, it is on the record.
All, do we have a second on a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night.